Good evening. I'd like to reconvene City Council's success agency to the Westminster redevelopment agency meeting right now, seven thirty P M. Wednesday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Ta.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Here.
Councilmember Do.
Here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
I'm here, and my apology for not being there in person.
Thank you. He is reaching us via Zoom. You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Next, we have salute to the flag will be Vice Mayor Carlos Menzo, and invocation will be City Attorney.
Please join me.
Ready? Begin.
That's a legion to the flag, the rise of America, and to Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for the opportunity to join once again to conduct the city's business. We ask for your presence. We ask for your guidance to make wise decisions for the future of this city. We commit the evening to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Vice Mayor and City Attorney. Next, we have City Attorney Close Session Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There were four items on the closed session agenda. They were, each of those were discussed, and the council provided direction concerning the last two items, in particular, the item number three with respect to performance evaluation city manager. The city council voted to continue the discussion of that item to the next meeting. So that was on a council member, Monzo, seconded by Tree, five-oh, just to continue that discussion to the next meeting. Nothing further to report.
Thank you so much for that. Next, we have expert communication. I see none. And City Clerk Report. We have COVID nineteen update from David Segura, Emergency Service Coordinator. Anything from City Clerk Report? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to continue to invite the community that we still have openings available on our commissions and committees to please visit our website and submit an application if you're interested. And then next, I wanted to introduce to you Mr. David Segura, our Emergency Services Coordinator, who will provide a COVID nineteen update. Welcome.
Hello, Honorable Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and community members. It is my pleasure to present the monthly COVID nineteen update. Since my last report, we haven't had many significant changes, at least locally, with our mandates or even our numbers, nothing significant. We've had some increases, and I'll share with you some of that. So according to the CDC, the Omicron variant, specifically BA two, as I reported before, continues to be the dominant variant of COVID cases in the U.S. As previously reported, BA two is an easily transmitted version of the original Omicron coronavirus. Though BA two is rising in the U.S., leading public health officials continue to report that they are not expecting another dramatic surge in new cases. This is largely due to the amount of immunity within our population. The increase in COVID cases is relatively low when compared to the last winter surge. The CDC's community level chart shows that much of the U.S. is at the low community level, and this includes Orange County and most of the counties in California. Again, the community levels are determined by looking at hospital beds being used, hospital admissions, and the total number of new COVID cases in the area. To provide perspective on the current uptick, I will compare today's numbers as reported by the California Department of Public Health to those reported January of this year. So today's case count is six thousand two hundred and fourteen. In January, the average count was forty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-seven. Today, there are one thousand two hundred and three hospitalizations statewide. In January this year, there were nine thousand two hundred and seventy-nine hospitalizations statewide. Today, there are one hundred and fifty-three ICU patients statewide. In January, there were one thousand five hundred ICU patients statewide. So you can see how we still remain in the low community level based on these current numbers, especially when you compare them to the winter surge. Still, this is no time to drop our guard. It would be very short-sighted at this point to assume that the lower numbers mean lower risk. Obviously, we're pleased to see that the numbers dropped significantly from the winter peak, but as we experienced in December and January, this virus has surprised us with a significant surge back then and could again, hopefully not. BA two isn't the only Omicron subvariant that health leaders are watching. In South Africa, two others, BA four and BA five, have begun to surge. Low numbers of these two subvariants have also been detected in the U.S. These two Omicron variants have been reported as to be highly transmissible like BA two. Now, we know that some people are at higher risk for serious illness and face challenging decisions on how to protect themselves from COVID nineteen. While most universal mask requirements have been lifted and are now highly recommended, it is up to each individual to evaluate their own personal risk and determine how to best protect themselves and their family from COVID nineteen. According to the California Department of Public Health and the CDC, wearing masks and getting vaccinated will further improve protection from COVID nineteen. Under California's mask Monday, under California's mask guidance, masks are strongly recommended for all individuals in most indoor settings. Masks are still required for everyone in high transmission settings like emergency shelters, healthcare settings, correctional facilities, homeless shelters, and long-term care facilities. Local jurisdictions may have additional requirements beyond the state requirements based on local conditions, and we've seen that mostly in the L.A. County area, and it does tend to lead to some confusion, but the local agencies, oh, jurisdictions do have the right to do that. In closing, I am pleased to report that the positive rate of COVID nineteen cases within our city's workforce remains low. That is the end of my report.
Thank you so much for your report. Any questions or concerns from members of City Council? Okay, thank you. Next, we have City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and members of the public tonight. We just have a few announcements. First off, we're excited to invite everyone to our first annual Public Works Open House. That's coming up next Wednesday, May eighteenth, from three to seven P M. over at the Westminster Corp. Yard. It's an opportunity to learn about what services are provided by our Public Works Department, and we'll also have representatives from our PD, OCFA, OCTA, Sand District, Community Services Department. It's going to be, it's free, it's fun. We'll actually have document shredding, e-waste, and oil waste drop-off, so it's a good opportunity for you to, you know, save the earth. And on Saturday, May twenty-first, between eight A.M. and two P M., we're having a catalytic converter etching event in which you will, you can drive up with your vehicles, and we'll etch your catalytic converter for you. That's also held at the Corp. Yard. It's hosted by our PD as well as our Public Works Department. It's free, and it's first come, first served. And our Corp. Yard is located at one four three eight one Olive Street. Police Department, just like to announce that we had a retirement. Mark Contreras was the record supervisor. He's been with the city for fifteen years, and so we'd like to recognize him and thank him for his years of dedicated service to our city in his role as the record supervisor. He was the primary custodian of records for our Public Safety Department. So thank you, Mark, for your services to the city. On May seventeenth, we have our annual Code Three for a Cause Memorial Bike Ride Event, in which riders and support personnel from our PD will leave from PD Caravan to the California State Peace Officers Memorial in Sacramento, and they'll set out on a six hundred and twenty-nine mile journey on bicycle back to Westminster PD. They do this every year. It's done on their own time, at their own expense, and each rider donated funds toward the Westminster Police Officers Memorial Fund. So on the last day of this ride, which is different from what they normally do, they'll actually be riding over to the Huntington Beach Police Department, where they'll have a moment of silence in honor of Officer Nick Vella, who was the officer who had passed away in the helicopter crash in Newport Beach a couple of months ago. And then the riders will come back here to the Westminster Civic Center on May twenty-first, and they'll be greeted by family and friends. That is a Saturday. Normally, staff is out there to greet them as well, but we would love to invite anyone from the public who would like to come in and greet them. The mission of these riders, to ensure that nobody ever forgets the sacrifices made by law enforcement officers across the country and their families every day. All the proceeds go towards the family of fallen officers, and this year they've raised in excess of sixty thousand dollars, so we commend them for that. Last week was Public Service Recognition Week, so I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of our public servants and all of our employees who do a tremendous job, you know, in their everyday responsibilities. And last week as well, it was also International Municipal Clerks Week, so I'd like to thank our city clerk staff, who work hard to make these council meetings happen. Last but not least, Orange County Fire Authority, they are hosting their third annual Girls Empowerment Camp, which is going to be on May fourteenth and fifteenth, Saturday and Sunday. It's a free two-day camp that's open to campers ages fourteen and eighteen, and it introduces them to fire service through hands-on experiences with OCFA firefighters and professional staff. So if you are looking for more information regarding that, you can visit Orange County Fire Authority's website or contact them at seven one four three five seven 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 eight two. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you so much for your report, City Manager. So next, we have special presentation. We have a few proclamations. I'd like to invite all the council to join me to present proclamation.
The mayor and members of the city council, OCFA normally would take the, accept the drowning prevention awareness proclamation, but they are on response to an emergency fire, so we don't have a representative here tonight.
Anyway, we have a proclamation, so I'm going to read the proclamation, drowning prevention awareness, May to August twenty twenty-two. Whereas drowning is a leading cause of death and disability in California for children under five years of age, and whereas for every child who die from drowning, another age receive emergency care for non-fatal submersion injury. And whereas fatal, non-fatal drowning is a sign event occurring is as little as two inches of water, including inflatable swimming pool, spa, bathtub, ocean, and anybody water. And whereas the table this year, water safety campaign always wash the water and never swim along, give information on how Westminster residents can help prevent drowning by visiting the Orange County Fire Authority website. Whereas the initiative set for in the A B C of water safety program will increase public awareness regarding proper procedure to prevent this needless tragedy. Whereas Orange County Fire Authority will be taking this opportunity to increase public awareness about drowning prevention to their works community outreach campaign. Now therefore, I treat Tom, and the City Westminster on behalf of Vice Mayor Carlos Menzo, and Councilmember Ty Do, Kimberly Ho, and Chi Charlie Wen, do hereby proclaim City Westminster participation in the Always Wash Water and Never Swim Along twenty twenty-two campaign that kicked up in May and continue to August by encouraging all families, parents, residents, school, recreational facilities, businesses, and homeowner association to become partner in repairness by increasing their knowledge of proper safety measure in drowning prevention. So that for OCFA. We have the next proclamation. Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. Next, proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month, May twenty twenty-two. Whereas the mental health and well-being of children and family is a red significant, especially during, during challenge of dealing with pandemic and mental health crisis. And whereas during this challenging time, it is important to be aware, support these in need, and access resources to access family, friends, and committee members in need. And whereas, according to the U.S. Surgeon General, mental health is fundamental to health and indispensable to person, to personal well-being, family, and interpersonal relationship. And whereas one of the five Americans will face mental health challenge in a given year regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, race, religion, or economic status. And whereas there are widespread misunderstanding and discrimination concerning mental health that can be eliminated by recognizing that mental health challenges are real, common, and treatable. And whereas with early and effective treatment, individual with mental illness can recover and live full, productive life. And whereas, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and is a time for community to acknowledge the importance of mental health, take action to ensure that individuals facing mental health challenges have access to the care, treatment, and prevention services they need and deserve. Now therefore, I treat Tom, and the City Westminster on behalf of Vice Mayor Carlos Menzo, and Councilmember Ty Do, Kimberly Ho, and Chi Charlie Wen, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-two as Mental Health Awareness Month, and City Westminster, and encourage all members of the community to support each other and raise awareness in mental health advocacy. So last but not least, we, oh, we have the breakfast center too for, okay. Yes, please.
Which way do I stand? This way? Oh, okay. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members, for proclaiming May as National Mental Health Awareness Month. My name is Mara James. I'm the founder and CEO of the Extraordinary Lives Foundation. And here we have Duan Tran, who's the chairman of the board, and Jenny Williams, who's a board member. And we believe in looking upstream, so we focus on young children. As you can see, we have a character that happens to match both of your ties. So way to go. That was beautiful. And yeah, so we really appreciate you recognizing this, and we need to start upstream, three- to seven-year-olds, to prevent things later on.
All right. So we have another proclamation, right? Last but not least, all right. Proclamation, Asian American Pacific Island Heritage Month, May twenty twenty-two. Whereas Asian American Pacific Island Heritage Month is a month to celebrate and pay tribute to the contribution of Asian Pacific Americans to American society, history, society, and culture. And whereas the month of May was selected as it honored immigration, the first Japanese resident to the U.S. in eighteen forty-three. Additionally, May also marked the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in eighteen sixty-nine, constructed by the labor of mostly Chinese immigrants. And whereas Asian American, including Cambodia, is Indian, Mong, Filipino, Chinese, Korean, Japanese, Haitian, and Vietnamese. Whereas Pacific Islander Americans, including Marshall Islanders, Hawaiian, Tongans, Xomani, Cham, Maor, Tahitian, and Moray. And whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans in the county of Orange, the Turk, largest Asian Pacific Islander American population in the U.S. after Los Angeles, California, and Honolulu, Hawaii. And whereas a vast diversity of languages, religion, and cultural tradition of Asian American and Pacific Islander is continuously forced to strengthen the fabric of American society. Now therefore, I treat Tom, and the City Westminster, on behalf of Vice Mayor Carlos Menzo, Councilmember Ty Do, Kimberly Ho, and Chi Charlie Wen, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-two as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Westminster, and encourage all Westminster residents to celebrate this time and recognize the importance of the contributions made by Asian and Pacific Islander Americans to the community. So this month is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Okay. That's all we have for our proclamation. Thank you. All right. Next, we have oral communication.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any items on or not on the agenda and that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, except public hearing items. Members of the public wishing to address the public, excuse me, members of the public wishing to speak have submitted speaker cards. If there are any other ones, we will receive those, and you will be called to speak up to five minutes. We will do the members that are here in person first, and then we will continue with anyone wishing to speak on Zoom by raising your hand, and I will call your name. So the first speaker that we had that submitted in advance card is Tony Bowie. If you could please come up.
Good evening, elected Mayor Ta, and the appointed Vice Mayor Menzo, and other council members. And good evening, City Council Attorney, and all the officers, and all the police officer, and city, and all the residents of City of Westminster. The reason I call you elected, because from six years, six months from now, people, if they voted for Mayor C pass, then City of Westminster will no longer have elected. All of you will have rotated or selected within a group for to be running as a mayor, and that is shameful for our City of Westminster. We doubt great our city. Most of the big cities, most of the efficiency city, they have a mayor who is elected by the whole city, not by a small area. And therefore, it is wise for you to vote no on Mayor C, because I saw it in the booklet. Mayor C, they said that they will have rotated or appointed. Therefore, our city will have, next time when you met a mayor, you will say, good evening, appointed or rotated or anything, but not elected. That's shame for our city. We are going downward instead of going upward to be a grade A, and now we are in grade C. C, that means very bad, great for the City of Westminster. And Mayor C, they always say that they will stop corruption, but actually, they are the one who create corruption, because they just colluded. By three people collude together, they can vote their own mayor. And when something wrong with our city, they blame not the, they ship the blame to each other, and our city will not know who is responsible. Therefore, Mayor C, although it is proposed by Mr. Terrible Terry Rains, sometimes it creates terrible drains to our people, or Terry Wu, fool, and or weird fam, they all colluded with the group of three. That is, the group of three who is manipulate our city for their own purpose, that the group interest, for their own interest group, that is bad for our city. That's why I keep coming here to this podium to ask for you transparency. And you finished, you work for your fiduciary duties, and also for efficiency for our city. You should not work for your own group, your own agenda, or you, your own interests. I know many business people, they get permission to work, and then later on, it was canceled by a group of three or some of the commissioner in planning commission. Because if you keep doing that, City of Westminster will be sued by business person. And in the past, City of Westminster has to pay a lot, lot of damage to, because you violate the laws of City of Westminster. I came here to bring up the issue of the City of Westminster, and I hope all of you have to work together as a group, not a, a group together of five, not as a gangster of three. Therefore, it is not good to operate in that way. Thank you for listening to my concern. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jill Dominguez.
Have you missed the mark on Mike Bellitt? I've asked for an interpreter. I've asked for an interpreter. My request is simple. I would like my words translated into Vietnamese. In consideration of inclusion for all that listen to our comments, as I felt very included when Councilmember Ho translated in English for me as she spoke to her constituents. Is that possible this evening?
City Attorney? And this is an item on the agenda, and I realize, so we're going to have a discussion later. But if you read that staff report, it explains that the language in the Brown Act specifically states that the purpose is to communicate, for non-English speakers to communicate to the city council. So for that reason, it's, the council could allow that, but that's discretionary. But from the Brown Act standpoint, we're not required to translate to another language.
I was asking for respect, not requirement from the council.
Speak in English.
I'm asking for respect, not a requirement, so it would be up to those seated here this evening if they choose to allow it. I'd be happy to shorten my speech to two and a half minutes. I'm perfectly capable.
I'm okay if the rest of the council is. Yeah, so.
I'm okay with her request.
It's up to the council.
Thank you.
And you know, I would like to remind the council that we
that we're going to set precedent if we allow today and we have to allow for every city council meeting. Go ahead, ma'am.
But and before she goes, to be clear, we're talking about a total of five minutes, correct?
Correct.
Okay, total. Go ahead.
But Councilmember Do brought up to the point, if we allow for the speaker to speak English and translate into Vietnamese today, so in the future, we have to allow that.
Correct. We're not required to allow, but the council is choosing to allow that.
And so does that mean we have to allow it all the time?
Every time, yeah, because.
But I would say we allow it today because we don't have a policy set. But I believe we should, you know, set our policy. But for today, we're going to make this exemption. And then let's include that into our policy or agenda so we can discuss and update our policy. So at that time, we may decide to go ahead and continue that, add that into a policy so we could extend that courtesy to everyone. Or we would, you know, whatever you decide at that time. Okay. So but for tonight, it's not in our policy to not allow her. So we'll just let her, we'll allow her tonight.
Five minutes total. And then the translator will translate that into Vietnamese.
Thank you, council members. Tonight is the time for a history lesson, a lesson that the council needs to hear from the citizens of Westminster. I am the descendants of immigrants, immigrants who came here seeking a better life through democracy, a democracy in which the right to vote was paramount to liberty and happiness. My grandmothers were both born in two and lived in the United States where the right to vote was denied by their gender. That all changed with the 19th Amendment. The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. The simplicity of this statement took decades to ratify. My grandmothers, my mother, my father, all made voting the center of our worlds. It was a rite of passage. A day we went to the polls was as a family. But what does all this have to do with our city council and the public comments this evening? Tonight, I see that again, there is not an agenda item to put a measure on the ballot of our voters to save our city and pass a sales tax measure. Again, I am here to confront the reality forced upon us by the inept, inactive council that insists on denying our citizens the right to vote on an issue that is ours to decide. But instead, they act as gatekeepers to the vote. Gatekeepers to the vote, sound familiar? I am here to inform and educate our citizens to stand up and demand that this council stop denying and suppressing our right to vote. We face imminent collapse without the tax measure. We will be bankrupt as a city by 2025. That means no city service, no police department. Why bother? Without these services. We will cease to be a city. We will simply be folded into a larger unincorporated area with the closest station of the Orange County Sheriff being Yarbalinda. With an average response time of 40 minutes. Let that sink in while you consider what the city council of vote keepers is withholding from our citizens. Speak up, have your voice heard. Voting is at the heart of democracy.
Next speaker is Conrad Gomez. Conrad Gomez.
City Council, my name is Conrad Gomez. And I'm on the Quantri Committee. And I am also a president of Vietnam Veterans America Chapter 756 out of Long Beach. And I'd just like to review a couple of things of the Brown Act that I'm confused about. And first of all, I had the application, we're supposed to file the application. And then the sign the Code of Ethics and a copy of the utility bills and a driver's license. And that was due in September 2022, 2021. That was completed. I received an email on September 29. Congratulations, you are receiving this email because you have been appointed to the Quantri Monument Committee and contacting you to inform you about a couple of things that you need to be completed by the first committee meeting. That was October 24, 2021. That was a swearing in. So as it tells you right here, it says swearing in process, ethics training. Ethics training is how to take the AB 1220, 34 Ethics Training. You have to take them up. You are required to complete two hours of ethics training in general ethics principles and state laws every two years. Also, please make sure that you give yourself a minimum of two hours to complete the training. If your completion time reflected on your specific is under two hours, your training will not be considered completed. Well, out of the 13 members of that committee, only three are valid. I have five here. And I was reviewing it, just to give you the times. I won't go through the names, but if you need the copies, I'll certainly give you the copies. The first person did it in three hours and 57 minutes. Another person, I did it in three hours and 59 minutes. Another person did it in five hours. This one completed in one hour and 53 minutes. That means he has to retake the test. Okay. The next person, one hour and 55 minutes. That person has to take the test again. So in other words, out of the 13 members that you had on this committee, there's only three of us that did what the city required. Why is that? The city attorney on December 21 sent a letter to the committee, and it was read to the committee stating that there was Brown Act violations and also that they needed to get this online course done that was supposed to have been done by October 24. Obviously, they paid no attention to it. And to me, that shows complete disrespect to not only the city council, but to the citizens of the City of Westminster and the state of California. If you're going to be on a committee and you're supposed to have ethics training, well, then do it. It's an honor to be on a committee, I believe. It's just like if you do jury duty. I know some of us don't want to do it, but it's our responsibility. I can't understand how this was overlooked. You know, we have a city manager. What was, why was this? Or what was the penalty for not doing it? Were you allowed to be on there or not? You know? And in the committee, I don't understand why there was 11 Vietnamese and two Americans. That's the two Vietnam veterans. And we had 11 Vietnamese. I just don't understand that. Why would you set us up for failure? And I've said that to you before. And this is one of the reasons. And I could give you a whole book. But anyway, if you're going to pass out these tests for us to do, then have everybody comply. Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Harrison. Please come forward.
The Quantri Committee held their meeting Monday and voted. Some of the truths about the depiction display and the committee's failures in violating the Brown Act and no Code of Ethics are being presented here. Initially, we were proud to be a part of creating an historical accurate Quantri monument, especially being open to the general public and to honor the true heroes from the American side to Vietnamese side. What a total failure. The city council has been provided details of these failures, knows the truth, and ignores it. The monument is not historically accurate. The general public has been excluded entirely, and American involvement is left out. Evidence abounds from pictures, actual newsreels, historical research. There's no citadel wall with a pagoda on top of it behind soldiers raising a flag. Instead of a committee of 13, including alternates, this was a committee of one that the city staff bent over backwards and worked with exclusively, accommodating every step along the way. Evidence of Brown Act violations provided the city have been ignored. The Vietnamese patches have never been vetted. The rear hidden panel has never been presented, and it's not in the presentation you're going to receive. You only have four American and 14 Vietnamese patches on the ever-changing depiction for the front of the monument. The rest of the monument, Vietnam veteran patches are regulated to a nonexistent rear panel. The vote was nine to two, the two American Vietnam veterans. The militaristic narrative was voted on, also nine to two, as proposed is wrong for a public monument, not correct and disorganizing, lacking key facts. America's involvement is missing. It is poorly written, names are wrong, soldier ranks are wrong, misspellings. Limited corrections are going to be made. However, I thought that there was going to be an intelligent oversight of the narrative, not just converting Vietnamese to English, but an intelligent oversight of the whole thing. No one has been addressing the size of the monument. It is massively too large to be placed in a public park, larger than the Vietnam War Memorial at Freedom Park. The two parts of the proposed monument, which is not historically accurate, offer a makeshift homeless shelter where view of illicit activities will be hidden. Its tempting cartoon depiction will be a jungle gym for the youth to climb on and be a part of the soldiers and fall and get hurt. I prepared a detailed list of concerns with the depiction display, sent it in an email to the committee, the city council, met with committee members in my home and publicly, met with certain city officials, where from most, I was asked to compromise America. Can I compromise? This is a Vietnamese monument. Speaking with many committee members individually along the way, they were in agreement with some and were going to work with me, and then the door slammed shut. No further communications. I knew they talked with Kenny before their meeting and after our meeting. Two Americans were added to the Vietnamese committee to lend credibility to the project, then excluded 100%. Did it start with Kimberly Ho's Brown Act violation of total involvement with the committee? Emailing everybody in the committee, including Fat Bowie, do not respond to Bob. There were many different military coalations in the Vietnamese community. This coalition is made up of one, the committee, the Vietnamese community of Southern California, the military community that uses the Vietnamese library, the military community that runs prayer vigil on Sunday. They don't all get along. They don't all represent the city. City should not pay homage to only one coalition because it does not represent the entire Vietnamese community. And what about the majority non-Vietnamese citizens? Stupid is knowing the truth, seeing the truth, but still believing in the lies. Please remove the American patches, front and back, and the token mention of American involvement. This is a Vietnamese-only monument. Respect America.
The next speaker is Brad Wade. Please come forward, Brad Wade.
Mayor, City Council. My name is Brad Wade, and I'm a public work supervisor for the City of Westminster, as well as a public member of the Westminster Municipal Employees Association for 25 years plus. I oversee the parks, streets, trees, graffiti, median maintenance, and numerous contractors that keep the city clean and respectful. The limited staff that work for me are good at what they do. Their professionalism, their knowledge, their work ethic, their attitude, and their ability to interact with the residents in a caring way. The reason why I say limited is the fact that we hire qualified employees. However, they resign and take jobs elsewhere in neighborhood cities. The reason for this is due to competitive salaries. There are residents mainly near the parks that have built a commutative relationship with some of the park staff dealing with graffiti, parks, and playground safety. The fact that our public work staff is ready and resilient when that phone call comes into the corporation yard, that fact adds to a level of satisfaction and security for the residents of the city. That fact is a hard fact that you cannot take for granted. You, the council for this city, are going to vote on a motion 5.2 tonight to help build a valuable work staff and help promote qualities that I mentioned above. With this compensation package that will benefit you as a council, public work staff, and most important, the city, the residents of this city. Thank you.
Next speaker is Vincent Wante.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of City Council. My name is Vincent Wante. I'm vice president of the Westminster Municipal Employees Association. I'm here tonight to represent the members of our association who could not be here and extend gratitude on 5.2. First and foremost, on behalf of our members, we would like to tell you, thank you. We as WME members are proud to call Westminster our second home. And I say home because we spend about 80% of our lives with each other, working here in this city. We as WME employees take pride in what we do. From cleaning parks, repairing streets, replacing signs, fixing water lines, repairing facilities, going out on calls as PD, and the list goes on. repairing facilities, going out on calls as PD, and the list goes on. We want to continue to make our council shine. And we want to make this city a place where the community is proud to call home. We will be able to retain our current and future employees with this new contract. This will help the city keep and attract future employees in a current competitive market that includes water, parks, streets, facilities, police department, rec, and city hall. Now, this could not have been accomplished with the city as a whole, uh, with with just us, but a city as a whole. I feel and know this was a collective collaboration between management and WMEA, doing what is best for the city. I want to thank our city manager for believing in her facilities, city hall, PD, and public works teams. Without her, the team of HR, and the Public Works Director, this would not be possible. Thank you again.
Dan Napier, please come forward.
Can I start with, it's good to see all you in person. You know, the last two years, it's the whole Zooming. I know you've heard my voice, but this is me. Uh, so, good evening, council members, officers, directors. Ladies, gentlemen. My name is Dan Napier. I'm having a problem. First time I I spoke in front of you, I didn't need these. Now I do, apparently. Here we go. Uh, my name is Dan Napier. I'm the president of WMEA. Um, they say it takes a village. I've been part of this village for almost 10 years now, and in the big picture of things, it's not that long. But I did grow up right down the street. I I used to play football. I used to wrestle. I used to attend MUN conferences at Westminster High School. Uh, I work on vehicles for the city. I guess you could say I like to repair broken things. As president of WMEA, I've had the privilege of working with some amazing individuals. Um, I've also experienced the sadness of watching them leave. These mentors, as I like to call them, give Westminster its character. They defined who we are as a city and lifted us to be a better village. A few years ago, I spoke up. You remember. I said, we need Westminster not to be a pass-through city. We need a city people come to see, come to play, come to worship, come to enjoy our culture. It still holds true today. I still believe this is the way, and this is who we are. I believe in this town, the city, this village. A mentor is someone who has unparalleled knowledge, someone we learn from, someone who guides us, someone who has made the mistake so we don't have to. Currently, we lose mentors on a daily basis. These people, they train new employees. These are the people who know how to treat Westminster water. They know how to de-escalate a violent situation. They need to, they know how to help a homeless man. Some of them even know how to maintain a Ford Explorer. It's not such a nightmare. Some of them help a kid get through his first flu vaccine. It takes a village. Part of our issue is we don't take care of the people taking care of us, so they leave. We try so hard to find that right person. We go through so many checks and bounces. We have to get the right one. And when we finally do, when we find that perfect person, we do nothing to keep them. We had a kid, um, sorry, we had a young man, Cornelius. You guys have to know him. He came to us through the Police Explorer Program. Uh, I want to say he was Police Volunteer Staff of the Year at some point. Uh, he attended the Police Academy. He flew through our police training program. He was destined, it seemed to me at least, to be one of the best. And then he left because the gap was too much. He absolutely loved it here. From my view, albeit jaded, he loved being a Westminster Police Officer, but the gap was too much. So we trained a really good one, and we gave him to Newport Beach. And there's a number of very similar stories where Westminster employees couldn't weather the gap. They didn't see a plan, and we lost them. It takes a village. I would like to thank the people who saw the issues and said, let's get this fixed. Starting with you guys, starting with council. Without your guidance and your efforts behind the scenes, we could not have come up with solutions, not for not for one group, but the city, the whole city. The city manager and her staff, your tireless efforts show that you want to retain quality staff, mentors, if you will, the negotiation teams from both sides. Your ideas, your out-of-the-box thinking, your let's get this figured out, save this, saved the city many days of frustration and heartache. Thank you all. I'd also like to thank our residents. Thank you for being patient with us as we try to replace lost staff to address city issues. We are here for you. We want to help you.
Your time has expired.
Next speaker, Kyle Cisa.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I would like to start out by thanking the HR Director, Jody Greiner, Finance Director, Aaron Bax, WMEA President, Dan Napier, and the rest of the city staff for their diligent work on this proposal. Passing this revised MOU means so much to the members of the Westminster Police Officers Association and their families. These same members risk their lives on a daily basis for the safety of our community. This is going to greatly help with our working conditions, including but not limited to our efforts in retention and competitive recruitment, as well as minimizing patrol mandates due to staffing shortages. As you know, we have had not had any increases over the past few years despite the drastic rise in inflation. Our members have still provided the same quality service our community has come to know, respect, and deserves. Mayor and council, I appreciate your consideration in this matter, and our membership firmly firmly believes all of you will pass this without reservation. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Camila Overbee. Yes, Camila.
Keep our tone around here. Good evening, Council, Camila Overbee, resident of Westminster. First item, please consider this my official request to fly the pride flag here at City Hall for the month of June, AKA Pride Month. The city does not have a flag-flying policy, and there's no official way for the request to be made, so I'm doing it now. And before Councilmember Hall makes the argument of, if we do it for one, we have to do it for it and lost. Shirtlet V Boston was decided by SCOTUS 9-0. I'll provide the flag, you provide the poll. Item 3.6, the policy you presented falls incredibly short of being transparent and undermines the spirit of the law. Transparency and the welfare of the community is at the heart of AB 481. Military items 3, 4, and 6 listed in the PD's policy lists riot and crowd control under authorized use or purpose. AB 48 clearly states, except as otherwise provided in subdivision B, kinetic energy projectiles and chemical agents shall not be used by any law enforcement agency to disperse any assembly, protest, or demonstration. Crowds are not riots. Laws are laws, and you don't get to bend them as necessary to aid actors, to aid bad actors in getting away with violence against the public. AB 48 also says that you need to identify persons engaged in violent acts, and the kinetic and chemical weapons are only to be aimed at those individuals. Projectiles shall not be aimed indiscriminately into a crowd or group of persons. I would like to see more emphasis regarding these issues in your policy. Rules of engagement should not be vague. They should be crystal clear. Additionally, you direct people to the policy handbook. The goal and purpose of this bill was to bring about transparency, not send the public on a wild goose chase to see when and what military weapons can and will be used against them. AB 481 requires that the quantity possessed be disclosed. The department has failed to do so. You've given a number not to be exceeded. With all due respect, I don't give a damn about how many you'd like to have. I have a legal right to know how many you have on hand right now. AB 481 also requires approval for additional purchases of this equipment. If we don't know how many you currently have, how do we know you haven't exceeded your proposed maximum? These items are purchased with tax dollars. They belong to us. Account for them. I have specifically and intentionally focused on military equipment labeled for riots and crowd control. 50% of this country is on the verge of losing fundamental rights to their bodies and privacy. We aren't going down without a fight. So when I and others take to the streets exercising our First Amendment right to peacefully protest, I don't want to be shot at with less lethal again because a department had unclear policies and procedures that skirted the law. I'm probably one of few, if not the only, person in this room that's ever lived through the trauma of being fired at and hit by less lethals that left my body riddled with cuts and bruises for days. If it were up to me, you wouldn't have any or the majority of the items on this list. I personally believe that allocating funds to help the community at large is a much more effective way to combat crime. When community needs are met, crime inherently goes down. AB 48 and 40 481 also require a complaint process. The PD has chosen their standard complaint process, which is fine. However, I would suggest putting a tab on your homepage for complaints. Additionally, I ask you this. How is the public at large supposed to trust that a fair and just investigation will be concluded when everything is done in-house behind closed doors with no oversight from the community? If and when issues are sent out to be investigated, we send them to the DA Todd Spitzer's office, who's currently endorsed by the Westminster Police Officers Association. Legal or not, it has a pay-to-play vibe, falls incredibly short of fair or just, and definitely leaves an impression of impropriety. It's no secret that over the years, the relationship between PDs and communities has become increasingly strained. Trust is earned. Trust is not built in secrecy. When there's a lack of transparency, you aren't asking for trust. You're asking for blind faith, and frankly, I don't have that. Over and over, we've seen officers above reproach for their actions. Militarizing them only makes it worse. Despite the claim that this equipment makes communities safer, research has consistently shown it does not. In fact, it causes more harm, and communities of color are adversely affected at alarming rates. I ask for this council to request revisions to item 3.6 so as to be more transparent, truthful, forthcoming, and more aligned with the letter and spirit of the law. Bring it back at the next council meeting. The law is clear, and the public has a right to know. The PD wants trust. We want and deserve transparency and accountability. And for the last nine seconds, I ask for a moment of silence due to the Department of Interior's report that came out today regarding the 53 burial sites at residential schools.
Next speaker is Deborah Mariscal.
Good evening. Deborah Mariscal, Westminster. Chief, thank you. I did want to talk about the police department. I had been blessed to be to do two ride-alongs. I did one in December of 2019. And that one, we had one arrest that evening. We were doing a backup to Paco and Officer Travis. That misdemeanor became a felony when we got into the jail. Um, I went this Saturday night, and the events that I'm going to give you are not in order of the events that they had. I've kind of put them together as, uh, to make it a little bit easier. And I only got about three and a half hours because the officer that I was with had an earlier shift. So hopefully, I can get to go again. So the first instance that I'm going to talk about was at Stater Brothers on Newland and Westminster. We had a gentleman shopping with a machete in his backpack and had multiple calls from citizens and from the store manager. So we had four police officers and sergeant, I believe, that went to discuss things with him and get him to leave. He probably was homeless. He did get on his skateboard and took off with his, uh, you know, with his purchases, but that was pretty scary. The, uh, the next thing I'd like to talk about is the homeless. There is a man probably in his 50s, and I'm going to call him Newland Michael. He has found a house on Newland halfway between Trask and Westminster that he is using as his personal restroom. So we we got a call for that. We went to that. He pretended to have an epileptic seizure. Um, the officer was familiar with him. He knew his name was Michael, was able to see that he had not had a seizure, were able to get him up and on his way. The reason I'm bringing that up is because yesterday I was walking my dogs about 11:30 in the morning, and there he is again, same spot, same thing. I'm a little bit afraid to walk the streets with my dogs. Um, I can't get a police escort, but, um, it shouldn't be like that, our city shouldn't be like that. We had another instance with another homeless gentleman that the officer I was with had arrested him prior for slashing tires in the, um, in the Little Saigon Shopping Center. He was spent a couple of days in jail, and then he was released and he out again. He's homeless. And then we had another instance at the Chevron on Beach and McFadden. A lady that was doing some shoplifting. They actually have their own private patrol with an armed, uh, guard who was there. We had three officers that went to that, uh, location and also a supervisor. It probably took about 20 minutes to get that lady to go away. She was hiring the kite. So that was that was our homeless situation that we had. Um, the officer that I was with is Vietnamese, so he did a translation for a lady that didn't understand that the streets belong to citizens and they can park in front of her house. And so she's pounding on cars that had parked in front of her house. So we went and did that, did a few miscellaneous truck topics stops. The thing that got me more than anything, because I I I know, I'm aware that we have slap houses here in Westminster, but I had no idea how many in a small geographic area of where this officer was supposed to patrol. I quit counting at six. We met up other officers, and everybody was fabulous, all the people that I had interaction with. We have so much crime in this city that is underground that it is phenomenal, and we need to do something about it. I am here to support our police department. The last thing that that I did was, we had a noise, uh, complaint for our birthday party. They had a jumper in the back of the house, and it was a kid's party. It was 11 o'clock at night. We went. They were very nice, three officers for that. We need to keep the tax. We need to be able to allow the citizens to vote on keeping the tax. And if you're not willing to allow us to do that, it's just a different way of saying defund the police.
Next speaker. Is Beverly Nixon?
My name is Beverly Nixon. I am a part of WMEA, and I have been with the city for 17 years. Uh, my title is a accounting assistant, and I am dealing a lot with the customer, water customer on phone and in person. Uh, I am always find a way to help customers whatever they need. And the important thing is I am speak Vietnamese. So many of the Vietnamese customer ask the question and ask to talk to Vietnamese employee. And it's fortunate that I am, right now is only one speaks Vietnamese in the water department. Uh, because of the, my title is a accounting assistant. Because of my title is a accounting assistant. So I help a lot with the water building and to prepare to send out the bill for the customer. And up till now, I am very appreciate that in the year twenty twelve, the mayor and all the the council member assist me in saving my position. And up till now, I am continue to work well for the city Westminster. And for the upcoming years with the situation that the tax, and I would like to ask the mayor and the council member, please consider the tax, allow the on the citizen to to be allowed to for their to to vote on their own. And I appreciate what you concern. And hopefully, that from now on and continue many years to serve the resident and all, and thank you.
Travis Gillespie, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Travis Gillespie, and I am one of twenty-three employees of your water department, of your employees of your water department under the Public Works Division and also the current secretary of the Westminster Municipal Employees Association. I have been employed here for five years now, and it has been the best five years of my life. I am thankful to be part of a team that passionately maintains your water system and consistently provides the citizens of Westminster with clean and reliable drinking water. We have worked tirelessly and seemingly unnoticed throughout the pandemic, maintaining this city's parks, streets, and water system. Over the past five years, we have lost ten valuable team members in the water department to other organizations because of competitive salaries. We in the water department would like to thank you for pushing this new contract forward on measure five point two. Without it, we will see the city's parks, streets, facilities, and water system change drastically for the worse if we cannot retain valuable and passionate team members. Thank you, everyone, for listening, and thank you, council, for your time and consideration.
Next speaker is Kai Dao. Please come forward, Kai Dao.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Before I start my speech in Vietnamese, I'd like to apologize to the non-Vietnamese speaking, especially Vice Mayor Manzo. I think like the interim city manager already explained to me, this is about I'm supposed to speak to the council, not address the residents. But I think between my speaking English ability and the mayor's ability to understand comprehensively, I think it's better that I speak to him in Vietnamese.
I would like to continue with the presentation of my evidence regarding Mayor Ta. Regarding about the fact that he conspired with undesirable element thugs to oppress independent press and media. To oppress a descending voice. Giáng sinh hai không mười chín khi ông xách động lôi kéo một số được gọi là tăng ni. So back in Christmas or twenty nineteen, you incited a group of the so-called nuns and monks. From other cities and state to Westminster here to protect your to show as a show of force to protect your seat as mayor. Invoking the Ang Lao last stand to attack and criticize people who dared to attack people who dared to criticize you. So according to you, all those people who dared to speak up and to criticize you, you, they are latchkey of the communists. You and your underlink have utilized those unethical Vietnamese media to spread your propaganda. And your propaganda is that dangerous residents like myself are worse than the communists. So in that instance where you have your people took to the street, you have the slogan that say, let's destroy.
The Communist China.
Let's destroy Communist China, and then we will destroy the Vietnamese communists. The Vietnamese communists?
Yes.
Monk Thitong like the spiritual leader of this crowd said this. He said that monk said that these traitor of Vietnam and after that Mayor Ta, as well as council member Charlie Nguyen, have indirectly agree with these slogans and these accusations by Trần Nhật Phong. Labeling me as a latchkey of the communists. And that I have attacked him and tried to stir up trouble in the community. And after that, they incite the crowd to surround and then attack me. And the two of you were acting as if nothing happened, and you were there just enjoying it. You were enjoying it. You saw that the crowd were attacking me and this season's newspaper person or Kuman Nguyen, and you did not do anything to stop that. You did not speak up. You did not intervene to stop it. Instead, you were gloating. You have previously spread fake news claiming that city council member Kai Dao want to change the name of the city of Westminster to Ho Chi Minh City. And you continue to employ or utilize YouTuber Nam Quang and also Ngoc Ki to accuse city council member Kimberly Ho's husband as a communist Chinese. And recently, Ngoc Ki, Kino, and YouTuber Nam Quang continue to fall is excuse accuse the father-in-law of city council member Ted Buoy of the city of Phan Valle as a high-ranking member of the communist of communist Vietnam. So in the previous meeting, city council meeting, you prohibit me from addressing the council in Vietnamese. And after you were lecturing by council member Kai Dao to respect my right as a citizen and resident. And you then deny that you did not try to prohibit me from addressing the council in Vietnamese. You said that you were just unhappy because I was not talking Vietnamese. I was taking advantage of a legal loophole to address the council that lasts for fifteen minutes. Tôi đã chứng minh cho mọi người thấy ông là một người nói láo. I have proved to everyone that you are a liar. Và đã sử dụng côm đồ lưu manh để đàn áp tiếng nói đối lập những người như tôi. And that you have utilized thugs to oppress people, to oppress people who try to dare to raise up their voice like I do. And so, thank you.
I'll speak English. I'm not attacking you personally. I'm just pointing out your shortcomings, unethical or illegal acts in hope that we will have a better mayor, hopefully, a more transparent, democratic, professional, if not moral, professional, if not moral, council that we all deserve in the future. Please vote yes on measure C. Thank you.
Next speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening. Terrible Terry Rains Westminster. I attended the Quang Tri Monument Committee meeting on Monday. What a cluster F-U blank K that was. But on Tuesday, I had the pleasure of riding along with our great police department's homeless liaison team. Vice Mayor Manzo also rode along for a while, as did our fearless leaders Christina and Adolfo. Mayor Ta showed up for a minute. Many had been working since four AM, taking part in a slap house raid, which yielded seventeen arrests. For every unhoused person you see on major streets or in our parks, there are twenty more you don't see, tucked away in areas not visible to the public. CityNet's homeless census is grossly unstated. CityNet was not there yesterday, but officers from Garden Grove PD and CHP were. Every unhoused person has a story, and I teared up listening to them. I think my United to End Homelessness T-shirt made them comfortable sharing with me. Thank you, Chief Linh, Commander McCormick, and Homeless Liaison Officer Perez for this great opportunity, and I hope you got some sleep last night. Speaking of our great police department and city staff, I support item five point two, the MOUs and compensation plans for our city employees, including a one-time ten percent salary increase effective July second, which is actually three percent for fiscal year twenty-one, three percent for fiscal year twenty-two, and four percent for fiscal twenty-three, combined into one. Positions et or above the median will not get the FY twenty-one or twenty-two increases. Some think we shouldn't give raises because of the city's looming financial crisis, but that is not the employees' fault. It's the council's fault. The chief nailed it at the last meeting. Employees can go work elsewhere and make more money and do less work. If only four council members had had the balls to put a tax major on the twenty-twenty ballot, it would have likely passed, and we would not be in this dire situation. For all the crap employees have been put through recently, and knowing many will lose their jobs because of this council's asinine politics and Mayor Ta forcing a major SS sunset date, they deserve this raise. Speaking of Mayor Ta, he is on Vietnamese media constantly promoting his run for assembly and opposing major C, which will eliminate the elected mayor's seat and create five council districts. The no-on-C signs say, protect your right to vote, in Vietnamese only. That is really rich coming from you and your supporters, Mayor Ta, considering you are not protecting our right to vote on extending the tax measure. Their arguments against the major are only in Vietnamese and are filled with the usual propaganda BS and fake news that they are famous for. Speaking of fake news, Rose Bowie, wife of AD seventy candidate Ted Bowie, who is running against Mayor Ta and Councilwoman Ho, filed a defamation lawsuit against fake news King Ping and fervent Ta supporters Kino and Nam Quang Nguyen. The recent fake news resolution was fueled by those two characters. Kino has been on Vietnamese media crying literally about this lawsuit and how angry is that Mayor Ta, whom he worships, betrayed their community by approving the Tony Lamb Park renaming. So much drama. Freedom of speech does not include making false statements that harm the reputation of others. That's defamation. And think that is what these two characters do on a regular basis. I really hope Mrs. Bowie prevails in this case. Speaking of freedom of speech, Mayor Ta is violating our First Amendment rights by blocking or not allowing comments from all constituents on his official new social media pages. Accordingly, I sent a form of complaint to the mayor, city attorney, and city manager on May first, directing them to review U.S. Court of Appeals Fourth Circuit decision in case seventeen two zero zero two Davidson versus Randall and take immediate corrective action. Also related to freedom of speech, council spent forty minutes at the last meeting to debate one speaker's rights to address council in two languages, which led to item six point one tonight. The interpretation of government code five forty-nine fifty-four three B two in the staff report is ambiguous. The current procedure of timing only the speaker's comments in their chosen language and not the interpreter's time is more fair than the statute. But the city attorney must provide a definitive opinion tonight as to whether or not the city is at risk by continuing this policy. I do not support speakers using their five minutes to speak in two languages without interpretation, though, because they might not say the same thing. All comments must ultimately be in English so the entire council staff and the public can understand them. Whatever the policy is, rest assured, Mayor Ta won't enforce it fairly. Speaking of Mayor Ta and fake news again, Ta's fifteen-minute promotional video, Steadfast One Way, Mayor Tre Ta's journey to fight for the community, and other campaign messages are hilarious and pathetic, filled with the usual fake news and political propaganda. Our homeless problem is better? BS. Ta led the effort to sue Newsom and stop the sanctuary state policy, and he fought those Democrats and won? BS. In twenty eighteen, it was a federal DOJ lawsuit against California when Brown was governor, not Newsom, and it was Marjorie Rice, not Tre Ta, who brought it before the council to consider joining other cities and supported the federal lawsuit or one filed by Huntington Beach. Both cases were ultimately lost. Remember, everyone, don't vote for Ta or Ho for assembly vote. Yes, on major C, and council, let us vote on the tax major. Let us vote. Let us vote.
The next speaker is Mark Lawrence. Please come forward.
Mark Lawrence, Westminster. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Bettenhausen, chief, Ms. Cordome, city clerks. Well, I don't know what to say following that. However, I did go to the Quang Tri Monument Committee meeting on Monday. I've been to all of them except one. The abject disrespect, very dismissive, very disingenuous. The way the tone was set that night, the vice chair came in, took his seat. We went to say the pledge of allegiance. I removed my hat. The vice chair did not. Nobody said a word. Nobody said a word. This is America. This is America. And as you've heard before, I'm an immigrant, born in England. And as you've heard before, I'm an immigrant, born in England, I have dual citizenship. But my father, my late father, he would never allow us to disrespect the flag. Not now, not ever. And for that to happen, outrageous. And then for that monument not to have the explicit seals and symbols of the United States Armed Forces, except they said, "We're going to put it on the backside." Well, in England, that's not a good term. Your backside is equivalent to your rear end. Once again, not a good thing. And that equates to nothing but a pet peeve project. Nobody wants this monument in the park. Those parks are for playing, having a good time. And just like what was reiterated by Mr. Harrison and Mr. Gomez, who sat here at that meeting patiently waiting, and yet they were outvoted time after time after time. Once again, utter disrespect for our country. Disrespect. That doesn't go over well. Not at all. So I hope they realize that they're not going to get any support from someone like me. Had it been done the right way, they would have the support of the community. But they decided on their own, through violations of the Brown Act numerous times. And then you have these AB1, 2, 3, 4 violations. I hope you look into that, Mr. Bettenhausen. I really do. Because if not, I will write a letter to the FPPC about this. This is wrong. And you know me a long, you've known me a long time. You know I will write that letter. You know it. But to have that happen, once again, more pet peeve projects. Folks, I'm not going to say anything about the MOUs. I have my personal feelings about that. But when 2016 was put into effect, the Measure SS, we were told we weren't going to have any of this. We were going to knuckle down and stick to the basics. And we simply have not. We simply have not. A lot of taxpayer money has been shoveled out the back door quicker than you can say "backside." And I just don't understand how the town is going to get through this financial crisis. Our water rates have been raised. We now have a hearing coming up at Midway City Sanitation District, where they're going to try to raise the sewer fees. And what's coming down from Washington, and what's coming down from Sacramento. The burden on the taxpayers is heavy. Now, I used to be an LA County Sheriff's deputy. I understand how they work. I understand how the cities do business, especially with the LA County Sheriff's Department because they have contract cities. Now, I have nothing personally against the police department, and some of you know what I've been through. But this is not about a personal vendetta with the police department. So I hope they do survive. I hope our fiscal house is in order. I really do. Because I love my city. My mom and dad bought their house March 1 of 1971. That's how long we've been associated with this town. So please, think about what you're doing. Think about your vote and how it affects us all. Whether it be good, whether it be bad. But please listen to the voters that put you up there, that voted for you, that believed in you. Thank you.
The next speaker is TK. Please come forward.
I am here to speak about the agenda item 3.6, militarizing the police. I don't know how anyone really thinks this is a really good idea at all. When we look at facts that police officers already work with the bias of someone just based on their skin color. There have been so many tragic incidences where people have lost their lives because police officers are taught, "Don't hesitate." And they're shot, they're taught for kill shots. So now, we want to dress them up as soldiers that fight in combat. That whole mindset of a soldier now in the hands of police officers that protect us. Police don't keep us safe. They come after. And when they come, they come ready to shoot. There have been too many people who have lost their lives. There's no accountability. What I mean about accountability is this. When an officer perceives a threat, that's when the shots fire. And that perception is just based on a person's color of their skin. I've seen over and over, time and time, that does not happen to a non-white person. It's time that things will change. It needs to change. And militarizing police officers is not it. Many times going out on the protest against police brutality, we have children, babies, babies still suckling their mom's teat. We have people that are in wheelchairs. There is no need to militarize police officers against civilians. There's no need for it. How about better training and services for people in the community? We know that marginalized communities are suffering from lack of a lot of things, and we'll start with a few. There's a huge wealth gap. We know that that's there. We know also that systematic racism is real. If you give people what they need, there's no need for other violence. There'll be no need for policing. The reality is that when you take care of a person's basic human needs, there won't be need for a whole lot of other wrongdoings, misdoings. A lot of times, you're looking at crooked cops too. There is greed. This will only continue to give more power to corruption, to greed, to murderous behaviors, and people ending their lives, or people losing their lives. There is no transparency. There's no accountability. What about qualified immunity? When will we have police officers accountable for their actions? If something happens on their watch and person loses their life, they go home, they sit, and they still get their money. Their kids still go to college. They still get their pensions. They even get transferred to another department. And the behavior just keeps going on and on. But anybody else in their jobs, if you had that behavior, you would not be allowed to continue your behavior. Doctors, nurses, teachers. But yet, a police officer can. And now, we want to give them military weapons? No, thank you. Black Lives Matter.
Is there anyone else in the community wishing, in person, wishing to speak on this item during oral communications? Thank you. We do have a few people with their hands raised on Zoom, Mayor. And the first person is Dao Tran. You may begin speaking.
Hello?
Yes, please begin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Forty-seven years ago, around this time, Saigon, our lovely capital of South Vietnam, was in the darkest time of our history. The wound will never heal. In that emotional state, I would like to thank the city of Westminster for organizing the commemoration of the fall of Saigon and a week of flying the flags at half-stop to mourn the lost country. Next issue I want to address the council is the fact that on April 19, council member Kimberly Ho came to a Fountain Valley council meeting to campaign for herself while verbally attacked on a city project and a Fountain Valley council member who also runs for state assembly as her. She was shameless for doing so. She also bragged about her transparency, saying she will clean up Sacramento. The Vietnamese community here knows all about her lies on some YouTubes and on her private channel. Our memory is still fresh the night Kimberly Ho screamed and yelled at a college in Vietnamese during a Westminster council meeting. Bad enough that she had to be muted. Is that person clean enough to clean up others? The answer belongs to the city council here and the constituents of the Assembly District 70. Another issue I want to bring up tonight is Kai Dao, who came to speak in the last two meetings, April 13 and 27. And also tonight, I saw him speaking with the same intention. He clearly had the intention to personally attack on Mayor Chita. And none of the council members ever stopped him for doing so. And especially, I want to make the question with council member Tidal. You protect him to speak in Vietnamese. Then I want to say next, and you, you don't see that he attacked, he personally attacked on Mayor Chita. And while council member Tidal many times stopped us for, and he said that we personally attacked someone, and none of the other council members agree with him. So shame on him, so not stopping Tidal for attacking, personally attacking Mayor Chita. And I think it's not fair. But the most important thing, issue I want to bring up is the fact that Kai Dao, who can speak English fluently, but use interpreter in those meetings. First, I want to thank Westminster taxpayer for providing an interpreter for those who cannot speak English to the council. But Kai Dao cannot abuse this generosity. The oral communication is for residents to address their concerns, their opinions to the council, not to speak to the Vietnamese community as Kai Dao claimed. Shame on him and shame on council member Dao for protecting him to speak Vietnamese while he can't speak English. So I ask, I ask all the Westminster taxpayers, stand up for this. You don't pay for those people who can speak English and speak Vietnamese and abuse your generosity for someone who doesn't deserve it. Thank you for listening and good night.
Next speaker on Zoom is Amy Walsh. You may begin.
Hi. A couple of things that I wanted to speak on tonight, one of which is, I guess I'll preface this with, in regards to the contracts, the union contracts on the agenda tonight. First off, let me say that I believe that everyone that works for the city, in my humble opinion, deserves a lot more of a raise than, you know, what is in that contract. I'm just saying. However, let me also say that when we are on the brink of bankruptcy, I'm not sure that doing this at this exact moment is what's best. And I hate to say that because these people really, really deserve this. I'm glad, I was hoping that I would hear more from the unions tonight in regards to the, you know, putting the measure on the ballot and that kind of thing. So I am glad for the woman, I can't recall her name now, that did come up and speak, and she's, you know, she works for the city. And that warmed my heart because that showed me that, you know, one, if not more, of our city workers, you know, understand that if, you know, it's great to get these raises, but if it can't be sustained on a year-to-year basis, if we're going to be in the red for the next two years, let's say, we can't hold on, hold up to those raises. So that's, that's my only concern. So I would hope that the union members and the other city workers come forward and kind of let their management know and let their union, union boards know that, you know, they are thankful for this raise. But in all seriousness, this measure needs to be put on the ballot or else it's just going to go away and people will get laid off. So the next thing that I would like to do, which I know Camilla had tried to do it earlier with what little time she had left. I would just like to ask the council, take a moment of silence tonight to remember, honor, and respect the more than 500 children who were discovered in burial sites at residential schools today. And given that these schools operated for more than 150 years, that number is expected to grow to thousands, if not tens of thousands. Given all the atrocities inflicted upon Indigenous people, the least we can do is take a moment and honor them. Personal note, my family can only go back to the 1800s when it comes to our family history, and then it's like we disappear. So I just, yes, we have a lot going on in the city, but it kind of makes you put some things in perspective. So I'd really appreciate it if at some point tonight, the council can take a moment of silence. Thank you. That's all.
At this time, if anyone else wishes to speak via Zoom, please raise your hand at this time. Mayor, no one else has raised their hand. That concludes oral communications.
All right. With that, I close oral communication. Next, we have Concern Canada. Or may I at least under the Concern Canada, I consider routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council or staff request that specific item be removed on a Concern Canada for separate action or discussion.
Move to approve.
Second. All right, we have the motion and a second to approve the Concern Canada.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta. Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo? Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0 with Vice Mayor Monzo absent at this time.
Next item, 5.1, a wild contract for Westminster Boulevard Street Improvement Project from Usha Street to Magnolia Street.
Also move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have the motion and a second to approve item 5.1, asked, recommended.
Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0 to approve item 5.1, which includes approving a budget adjustment to the amount of 549,456.38 to cover City of Garden Grove's portion per cooperative agreement approved on April 27, 2022 by the mayor and city council and increase the revenue account in Street Improvement Grants Fund, reimburse other fiscal year 2122 by that amount. Also, to approve the award of contract to the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of 1,163,000,025.82 to RJ Noble Company and that all bids be rejected. Item 3, authorize a 10% contingency in the amount of 116,302.58 for potential change orders. And item D, authorize the interim city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city in a form approved by the city attorney. That motion carried 5-0.
Next item, 5.2, memorandum of understanding MOU term between the city and Westminster Municipal Employee Association, WMEA, Westminster Police Officer Association, WPOA, and compensation plan for unrepresented management, administration, confidential, and executive employees. So may I have a staff report for this item, please?
And Mayor, if I may just add that for the record, there were late communications that were included for this item as well.
Please.
If PCTA can please switch over, thank you.
King Mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Jody Greiner. I am the Human Resources and Risk Management Director. I am pleased to be here tonight presenting the following topic on memorandums of understanding and resolutions between the city of Westminster and our employee groups. The current labor agreements and resolutions expired on June 30, 2020. City representatives started discussions with labor groups approximately eight months ago and have recently completed the process with agreed-upon negotiated terms. The negotiations teams approach in identifying the following recommendations whereas follows. One, how does the city create an attractive benefits package so that we can retain and attract talent per the strategic plan? And two, how to address the implementation of the compensation study as approved in previous MOUs? Staff believes that this plan is a first step to achieving those goals. Before we get into the presentation, I wanted to take a moment and identify our employee groups. Currently, we have Westminster Municipal Employees Association, WMEA, Westminster Police Officers Association, WPOA, Management Administrative and Confidential Unrepresented Group, otherwise known as Admin. And we are proposing the addition of a new unrepresented group, otherwise known as Executive Group, which would include directors, assistant city manager, and city clerk. As you are aware, previous administration had contracted a consulting firm to conduct a compensation study. After several years, the study has yet to be complete. In September, HR made the decision to bring the analysis in-house with your approval in order to complete the study. I am happy to say that the study is 90% complete with the empirical data pulled, which leaves us with just fine tuning and preparing of the analysis. Staff recommendation is based on that data and by implementing as recommended, the city will come one step closer to resolving pay disparity as compared to the 12 cities used for benchmarking. The recommended terms are as follows. The contract term would run from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023. Based on preliminary compensation study analysis, we found that 91% of staff were underpaid. Staff recommends that each employee receive a 10% non-retro, non-compounding wage increase effective July 2, 2022. Positions that are currently paid at or above median on the preliminary compensation study will be exempt from the first 6%, which are the, which are the increase amounts suggested for FY '21 and FY '22. Once the initial 10% increase is applied, 26% of employees will be at median. Next is our compensation plan implementation. The goal was to increase wages in order to achieve median pay for all employees by August 2023. Implementation schedule would be as follows. Employees 20% and below median would be, would be at 20% by April 2023. Employees at 15% and below median would get to 15% by June 2023. And employees 10% and below median would get to median by August 2023. The schedule is a formula for implementation, assuming that budget shortfall is resolved. Additionally, and a continuation of an additional floating holiday and minor changes to vacation accrual for groups as requested. Also, CalPERS insurance has increased by approximately 8% for 2024, 2022. Therefore, the city will provide an additional $100 monthly contribution towards family leave health plans. And finally, executive staff to receive additional 40 hours of leave and additional $40 per month cellular stipend. In addition to the six components as laid out on the previous two slides, two additional administrative actions were taken to modify the administrative agreement. First, staff recommends retirement of 12 unused positions. These positions have been identified as either unused for several years or have been replaced by updated class specs. Additionally, updated exempt status. Sorry, second, four positions were reclassified from exempt to non-exempt based on duties and the Fair Labor Standards Act based on the exemption test. The positions identified lack the parameters necessary to be classified as exempt, which includes direct oversight of two or more employees and authority to make high-level decisions. In conclusion, the fiscal impact of the proposed changes outlined in the attached resolution is 2.766 million for all groups for a full year. This is spread as follows. General fund, 2.337 million. Special revenue funds, 79,000. Water funds, 347,000. Internal service funds, 3,000. No adjustment is requested at this time. The increases are effective in FY 2022, '23 and will be included in revised FY 22, '23 budget that will be presented to council in June. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Any common or any question from a member of the city council I'd like to ask our, our city manager? So the reason that our staff brought up this item on agenda because based on the study that we had a few years ago, am I correct?
So a little bit of a loaded question. So there are a couple of things or components related to this item. So number one, our MOUs are currently expired. And that's really the main reason why, why this is being presented. Second component of that and in which the terms that were negotiated into this do, you know, they, they are related to a compensation study that was supposed to have been completed at some point, which it was not. And so therefore, you could consider some of these terms or, you know, the, you know, the increase here is kind of a down payment toward that, you know, that compensation study that staff is almost done with. And so that's where, you know, that's where that number, you know, comes about. But yes, this is something that we need to do, you know, based on good faith bargaining and of course, you know, so other circumstances that we currently have regarding, you know, the MOU.
Thank you for that. I have a question. Can you speak to the, the reason? I just, I mean, I know, but I just want to make sure that the public knows the reason why it's taking this long to not complete the compensation study.
Absolutely. So back in December of 2016, there was a recommendation from outgoing council member Diana Carey to move forward with a, a classification and compensation study to, you know, make this workforce competitive. And so in early 2017, the city contracted with Coffin Associates, and that was under HR director at the time, Mike Harari. And the plan was to do a classification study. It was a two-part class and comp study. So at first, we would determine classifications, you know, updating those job titles, you know, duties and responsibilities. And then after that component was done, then we would move on to a compensation study portion of it. Just off the top of my head, from what I recall, it was supposed to be maybe an 18-month, you know, project from start to finish and of course, presented to council for, you know, for, you know, for implementation. We've had, we, you know, we've had some turnover over the years in our HR department and then as well as leadership in which city staff was unable to complete the study. Particularly, the classification part of the study took approximately three years to complete. And it was piecemealed together in, you know, in various, in various forms. And so once that portion was complete, then, you know, moving on to compensation, you know, obviously, we had, you know, change of leadership at that time as well. And through that, you know, through that era, the vendor that we were using for the classification study was then changed to a different vendor. So now we're using a completely different vendor for the compensation portion. And obviously, by doing that, you know, you're having to, to retrain them and get them acclimated to what it is that, you know, that we're doing. So as we were moving, you know, forward with that, then of course, more staff changeover. And so we had, you know, Jody start with us last, last July. And in trying to complete this compensation study, you know, we were, we needed more funds in which we came to council and asked for, you know, additional compensation to, to fulfill this project. And, you know, as staff was going through the compensation study that was being worked on and working with this vendor, it was discovered that the vendor was underperforming and there were some very gross discrepancies in that compensation study. And so staff took the, you know, took the, you know, took the approach of wanting to make sure that if we were going to do this study and expend, you know, funds, we might as well just do it ourselves, take, you know, take the time to do it and, and, you know, and finish it. And so, you know, I'm happy to report that, you know, within the next month, this compensation study, you know, will be complete. And so obviously, 18 months turned into, you know, about four or five, you know, four years or so. But, but that's why it took so long because you, you know, you had, you basically did not have stability in, in leadership to drive this project to the finish line.
Thank you, thank you for, for that. And thank you, Jody, for taking on the task of trying to finish something that should have been done way long ago. Another question. I knew there, there was, we spoke in the past savings from all the staff vacancies. How does that play into the, into the, what is it, to, for the cost of this?
So the savings that we've calculated from, or the salary savings in the past years have been about a million and a half. But this contract starts in July, so it'll be included in the next budget. So the revised budget that will come back to council will include these numbers if, if you approve it. So those savings will be in our fund balance and they would go forward to, to help pay for this.
Thank you.
Any other question from a member of the city council? So basically, that for the last few years, our staff salaries really low if we compare to other city, am I correct? How many city that we really study?
12 other cities.
Surrounding us. And we, and our staff is like under, underpaid, am I correct?
91% of our staff is underpaid.
Well, I mean, we all know the ugly truth and I think I just want to, I've always said this to community out there. And I've always felt that, still feel that way, that, you know, whether you live here, you know, you own a business here, you work here, you're part of the Westminster family. And that being said, you always take care of family. And I'm just, I want to say, apologize that it's taken this long and that our, you know, staff and all the departments have had to work under these conditions. So from, from me personally, I want to apologize for that. So I want to make a motion to approve this as recommended.
I'd like to get my input in. Understand that we are in a financial crisis at this point. However, yet you, we learn from staff. We lost our employees due to financial, you know, due to the pay. The city still need to run, you know, no matter what. And if we see that the situation that we keep losing our employees to the other city, you know, and what left is trouble, after trouble. I, I would see that, we discussed about this number of times already. So I, I appreciate that we picked some time, staff took some time and look at this and complete the study. And I trust that you, with the study that we had, we already looked into the problems and compare with other cities around us and with the, with the surplus that we had from, you know, previous year that from their employee left and with the money that we have surplus there that we are going to account into next year budget. I would think that is, it would be right for us to go ahead and move along and, you know, approve as the staff recommended. So with that, I do second the motion that Vice Mayor Manzo proposed.
To also say that before we vote, if I may. It does cost a lot more money to start a new group of, you know, new staff, new hire. You know, so I certainly wouldn't want to, wouldn't want to lose any of our good staff. So, you know, regrettably, it's, you know, this is the time where we're talking about the one cent tax and all that. But I know that the last speaker spoke about that. It's never a good time. But I think in light of what the MOU that expired and it took us four years, that's really not our staff's fault. We're talking about the, this is like an, an increase for the time being, this is a one-time increase, correct? Is that, no, this is the... This is a one-time increase, correct? Is that no? Is this the the one that we were talking about? The the MOU that is, we're only voting on this? What are we exactly voting on?
So we're voting on a 10% increase for all employees who are paid below median.
So the 10% increase for that we are voting on like tonight, how much did you can you tell me how much it would cost us? And when when would we need to, will we backtrack? Shall I say, is that moving forward from? From what day?
So if I'm understanding, it's 2.766 million that would be incorporated into the budget going forward.
Oh, going forward. So we're not doing any back pay?
Not doing.
I just want to confirm that.
No, this is non-retro, non-compounding.
Okay, moving forward as starting immediately?
Uh, it would take effect July 2nd.
July 2nd. Where would this money be coming from?
So it would be coming from 2.337 million from general fund, which is partially from salary savings, special revenue funds of 79,000, water funds of 347,000, and internal service funds of 3,000.
Okay, so salary savings and and what were the positions that we're saving in? And what were the positions? If you break down?
So the positions and the the million five was actually annually for the last few years. So it wasn't just one year of savings. It was about three years that I calculated. Currently, I believe we have 29 vacancies and I'm not sure. I don't have the list of the vacancies for the last three years, but those were the calculations.
Okay. Well, I think they deserve that. Just because, you know, this study has taken so long and it is really, like I said, it's not the employees' fault. And for us to make sure we're we keep them happy and we retain staff that are already trained to do the job, do them well, I think this is what we need to do. 91% underpaid, under the median?
Yes.
And that is something that you have confirmed? You're sure about that?
Yes, I have pulled all the empirical data. As I said earlier, we are just doing our fine tuning and putting together our written analysis.
Since we've already taken four years, we're, I'm sure we're pretty sure about the numbers, right? And I know there's something that you you said that you're about 90% done. And which part are you not done yet?
We've pulled all the data. We're just fine tuning it. So we're just making sure that we've benchmarked them against the appropriate titles. And then we have to then present you with an analysis of what we found. So we're really at the at the end of this of this process.
So when would you be able to present that part, the last part?
For the strategic plan, it's June 15th. We're we're working on it currently and I hope to have it in the next couple of weeks.
And why are you think it's imperative that we approve this tonight and not wait until you've all finished?
So in.
What do you think?
Well, in 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 good faith bargaining, we should definitely move forward with this. You know, as we also previously discussed other circumstances, we, you know, we should resolve, you know, some of the issues that we currently have. But but at the end of the day, we're trying to move forward with this organization. We are struggling to retain the employees that we have. We're definitely struggling to attract. But we certainly are, you know, we we don't want to lose the good employees that we have who have institutional knowledge here, who have essentially have not gotten a raise since 2017 and have.
When did that MOU expire?
So that the previous MOU, well, the previous MOU was from 2017. It expired two years ago. It expired two years ago. We're actually in, this approval will, you know, will will get us through the the end of, you know, of this particular MOU term. And then, you know, we're behind.
So, you know, for this organization to move forward and continue to do a good job serving the community, I recommend that we approve it. I don't know, we have a motion on the floor.
I believe we do. Mayor?
All right. I think we have a motion at the second on the floor. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right.
There there are five.
Can I make some comment?
There's face. There's four resolutions and then one job description as part of that motion.
Uh, Catherine Bodo?
Oh, thank you. So basically, what I'm hearing is that we inherited failed leadership from the past. And now we have to make a decision to take care of our employees. And you know, I I remember when I started my career in Long Beach in 1996, we went 10 years without any significant rates, doing more with less for a long, long time. So I certainly I can understand and feel your pain, you know, you try to take care of the city, bring a paycheck, home, raise a family, send the kids to college. And that's 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 it. That's all you care about. Okay. Whatever going on the city council, nobody cares. Nobody business. I totally understand that. And it's it's what we were witnessing this council for the past three years is outrageous. This council just just basically depends on tax money to pay the bills. And we're not bringing any additional funding. And now, you know, looking at the sunset of the cell tax in November, is it seems like the ship on the sink. But it's not it's not sinking yet. So to me, we, this council has to figure out a way to pay for this in the next year. But you, the employees, the police department, you deserve the the pay rates. And the council need to figure out how to take care of our employees. So that you can take care of your family. So the the MOU, what I'm hearing, the MOU expired in 2017, right? And 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 it's expired again 2019. And they're going to expire again 2022, 23? Or?
So it expired June 30th of 2020 and it will, the next one will expire June 30th of 2023.
By 23. Okay, so we're going to expire next next year anyway. We 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 have a common say of city employees. We have to figure out a way to pay for it. And it's it's time to for this council to work together and figure out a way to take care of business and bury the past. I don't I don't care how we're going to do it, but we're going to commit to take care of our employees. So, thank you.
All right. If there is no other comment, we have a motion and a second on the floor and a call for a question.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by Councilmember Nguyen. And that will include the amendments that were previously made to update the resolutions. The first one being adopt a resolution entitled the resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, providing for the compensation plan for the management administration, administrative and confidential employees of the city of Westminster for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30, 2023, amending Exhibit A salary schedule and modifying the compensation plan. Item B, adopt a resolution entitled the resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, providing for the compensation plan for the executive employees of the city of Westminster for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30, 2023, amending Exhibit A salary schedule and modifying the compensation plan. And C, adopt a resolution entitled the resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, adopting a memorandum of understanding between the city of Westminster and Westminster Municipal Employees Association for the period July 1st, 2020 through and including June 30, 2023, amending Exhibit A salary schedule and modifying the compensation plan. And D, adopt a resolution entitled the resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, adopting a memorandum of understanding between the city of Westminster and Westminster Police Officers Association for the period July 1st, 2020 through and including June 30, 2023, amending Exhibit A salary schedule and modifying the compensation plan. And item E, approve job description for community outreach coordinator. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much for your hard work.
Yeah, thank you. That clap goes deserved to the other way around. Not not this way, but the other way. Thank you.
All right. Next item, 6.1 ordinance establishing regulation and prohibiting the unlawful possession of catalytic converter in the city.
Do you want me to take this one?
Please.
Yes. So at the last meeting, we had a discussion about a catalytic converter ordinance. And the direction was to to put together an ordinance, very similar to the ones that are being adopted by other cities, to come up one we felt was as as strong as we could and enforceable. So what you have before you tonight is a is an ordinance that accomplishes that. I apologize for my voice. But currently, there is, to kind of summarize it, there's no state or federal legislation which helps to define and punish thefts of catalytic converters. And there's no state or federal legislation which requires individuals to provide proof of to law enforcement as to how they obtained a catalytic converter. This limits the law enforcement's ability to protect the public. And also to seize those suspected stolen catalytic converters. And so catalytic converters contain very expensive precious metals and the they're then sold and people, this is incentivized people to steal them and they're relatively easy to steal. The average cost to replace them is generally around $2,000 to the victim to replace that catalytic converter. Um, the the there's a rise in catalytic converter thefts for a lot of reasons, because of how easy it is, because of the high value of the the metals inside, and also loopholes in legislation. And as I said, the prevention of these crimes is nearly impossible due to the ease and speed with which they can be committed and the difficulty of tracing these catalytic converters back to the prior owner. They have no identifying markers. And so that's that's another aspect that needs to be addressed as well, is trying maybe marking them. So a lot of these crimes are going unsolved due to the fact that, again, there's we don't have any ability to prosecute them even when we find them. So we're in need of legislation to criminalize the mere possession of these catalytic converters when they're found. And there are some instances where people are pulled over and they may have, you know, four or five in their backseat. So what this ordinance is seeking to do is to, or to to make it a violation if someone's in mere possession of a catalytic converter and they don't have the appropriate documentation as to why they have it, the the owner of that catalytic converter. So this is seeking to achieve deterrence by establishing a zero tolerance policy for catalytic converter thefts, establishing sanctions for the possession of stolen catalytic converters, preventing criminals from profiting from the sale. And it's necessary to provide clear legal authority to our officers to better protect the public. To state the actual, what it says is it would be unlawful for any person other than a core recycler, as that term is defined in state law, to possess a catalytic converter that is not attached to a vehicle unless that possessor has valid documentation or other proof to verify that they are in, quote, lawful possession of that catalytic converter. And this section does not apply to detached catalytic converters that have been tested, certified, and labeled appropriately and are approved for use. So with that, there are definitions in here as to what lawful possession means, what appropriate documentation means, and it also establishes violations, which would be if a person is found to be in violation of they would be guilty of a misdemeanor, which is punishable by a fine not to exceed $1,000. And each separate catalytic converter could constitute a separate violation. With that, do you have any questions?
All right. Any question from?
I have a have a question to chief. I heard that we got a couple of catalytic converter arrests. I didn't share that.
Evening, Council, Mayor. To answer your question, Councilmember Doe, yes, actually, earlier this week, we had a very observant officer, Officer Steven Vu, that was patrolling a residential neighborhood in between calls for service. Sometimes the officers have a little time. He used his time to try to hit a couple neighborhoods before the end of his shift, very late night or or early morning, if you will, and came across some suspicious individuals in a residential neighborhood and stopped them, questioned them, found a number of already stolen catalytic catalytic converters in their car that had been taking off, taken off of cars belonging to residents in our city, and devices used to to take those things off of cars, burglar tools, and was able to make an arrest. So we're very, very happy. And in the middle of all this, we we at least got some of the crooks that are that are doing that.
So basically, right now, the only tool that our police officer have is witness the crimes in action in order to make arrests. Is that correct?
Basically, there if they do see those that stolen property in somebody's car and can trace it back to a victim, which they were able to do in this case, one of our residents who goes, yeah, it's my car and the converter had been had been stolen.
Right.
Yeah, yes.
So the the city ordinance basically gave a police officer the mere possession is illegal.
That is correct.
Could you be so kind and and prepare a council accommodation for that officers?
I absolutely can.
That we can present it to him next council meeting if 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 that not too much problem with the city manager?
He'll be here at the next city council meeting, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
I have a question for maybe city attorney. What what's the current law or the process for recycling centers accepting catalytic converters?
I I can't speak to that specifically, but apparently it's it's possible because they're not if they they can't identify them. So that's probably true of of valid recycling of these catalytic converters versus the ones that are stolen. They probably can't tell the difference. But maybe maybe chief can speak.
Yeah.
Onzo, good question. Right now, it's really unaddressed and and people, it's just the metal they're buying. And there's no identifying marks on it. As you know, we're doing a etching coming up here soon. So the recycling center buying it is kind of off the hook, if you will. However, I understand there's state legislation going through that is going to change that where they're going to have to show proof. So at the state level, they're trying to address it and we're hoping that that it does because that that takes away the market for it. And really, that'll solve the problem versus us going after symptoms of of enforcement after the theft's been occurred.
Yeah, I ask because I'm in the, as you know, I'm in the electrical business and we have, in our industry, there's a lot of stolen copper. And then I know there if you take a certain amount of copper to the recycling center, it's a wait time. You have to wait, show you show your identification and there's a wait period. It's kind of funny that this is such a big problem and such a valuable metal that there isn't a process like that, that at least wait times until the things are checked out. If that person really owns that property.
Yes, your copper wiring theft has been around for a while and the laws caught up to it. However, we're still waiting for the laws to catch up to the converter thefts. But it sounds like it's it's rolling in that.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
If there's no question, I'd like to move to approve it. Move to approve.
Second. Second.
Alright, we have the motion in a second. Do you brew us recommended?
Thank you, mayor. And that motion was made by councilmember Do, seconded by vice mayor Monzo, to conduct first reading and introduce ordinance entitled an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, adding chapter nine point seven seven unlawful possession of catalytic converters prohibited to title nine, public peace, public peace morals and welfare of the Westminster municipal code, establishing regulations prohibiting the unlawful possession of catalytic converters in the city. This is to read by title only and waive further reading. Councilmember Do.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho. Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item, review of oral communication policy for city council meeting. City attorney or city manager? I don't know. Who would like to go first?
You could save your voice, Christian.
Alright.
I'll, um.
Who volunteered to go first?
Right. Who's being voluntold? No, I'll, I'll go ahead and start it off. I'm sure we'll have a, a, a very good discussion about this. So, you know, as, as you know, last meeting, we, we had this item agendized to take a review of our oral communications policy for city council meetings, which would essentially extend to, you know, all of our public commission committee meetings as well. So currently, the city and all of our, you know, all of our, you know, governing and advisory bodies follow the guidelines that are set forth in the Brown Act regarding public participation in open meetings. Essentially, the Brown Act allows for us to establish a time limit for public speakers. And the Brown Act ultimately, you know, allows for, for those who use a translator, or it says translator, but interpreter, translator, to ensure that any non-English speakers who, you know, who are unable to, to, you know, speak, you know, non-English speaker, so unable to speak in English, that they receive the same opportunity to directly address the legislative body of a local agency, in which in that case, they would be provided at least twice the allotted time, you know, to speak and use a translator. That being said, over the past three years, we've had discussions regarding, basically regarding oral communications and this whole concept of how much time they get, you know, how are they utilizing the translator, et cetera. We've, we've essentially had an increase of non-English speakers, particularly Vietnamese, wishing to address the city council over the last three years. And we've had some inconsistencies regarding how we are handling these speakers. And so, you know, in twenty twenty, the city council did discuss establishing a, a policy for language interpret, you know, language interpreting. The city did not, the city did not legally, you know, is not legally required to provide an interpreter. But by practice, you've, you know, chosen to do so, to, to provide that extra step to ensure that, you know, our residents who are, you know, non-English speaking are able to address the city council. So we do have, you know, we do have a Vietnamese interpreter who shows up to every meeting, and then we also have staff on hand who can translate or interpret in Spanish. So, so we, we've, you know, we were asked to return, and that was back in January twenty twenty, but we were asked to return with some kind of proposed policy within four months, but then the pandemic happened, and then that just, that kind of went out the table. Because we didn't have any, we didn't have any issues at the time during virtual meetings, because it's a lot harder to, you know, to go back and forth with interpreting. And there just, there just was not a need at the time. It was also, you know, it was not a priority that we were addressing at the time as well, due to obviously, you know, the looming pandemic. So currently, when a speaker prefers to address the city council in a language other than English, requests for arrangements can be made in advance to staff. Obviously, we have, again, Vietnamese speaking and, and Spanish speaking available. And we, in the past, have also made arrangements for, for American Sign Language to have someone here. And so what they would normally do is contact the, the city or in the city clerk's office to make those arrangements. And, and of course, we, you know, we, we do what we, we do what we can. And so the existing practice is when a speaker presents themselves at the council meeting, and they require an interpreter to, to, to help relay their message to the city council. We only run the clock on the time in which a speaker is speaking. And that's, that's to create a consistency in that every speaker addressing the city council here has five minutes to speak or five minutes to address. And so we don't count the time that it takes to interpret. You know, we, we figure you, you know, in fairness, sometimes something that takes like, you know, three words to say in, in English, and it takes twenty in, you know, another language and vice versa. So, so we only time the, the actual speaker. You know, the process is, is, has been effective, and it's been fair. And it meets the intent behind the government code section for double time. But, you know, again, that's up to the council if, if you prefer that we, you know, go with that practice, or just start, you know, start a clock with, with automatic double time. The only caveat to that is when you, when you just automatically give double time, we've had instances in the past where someone would speak for seven minutes in another language, interpreter for three minutes. So essentially, you know, you, you, you can potentially create an inconsistency there, or not allow the interpreter enough time to interpret what someone else has said. So, so that's, that's where there's, there's been some inconsistency and why we reverted to, to a, a, a process of just timing the actual speaker. And so right now, you know, there, again, there's no requirement to allow, you know, additional time to interpret into any language other than English. The, so what we've had, and, and this is part of, you know, an issue that we've had mainly just in-person meetings, where we have someone come up to the podium and address the council in English, but then for purposes of, you know, purposes of the audience or other non, non-English speaking, you know, someone would come up and then speak in English and then speak in Spanish or Vietnamese. And, and so there's been, you know, there, there's been a, a general understanding that if someone was to do that, they weren't receiving double time. Because the whole intent of the Brown Act is for public participation, for members of the community to be able to address the governing body. And so therefore, it's not, you know, it's not a, a hindrance for someone, you know, in that particular case, because they're still able to speak to the council in English. So, you know, we, we have, so we have a lot of, you know, issues over the past regarding this, in which staff is really looking for clarification, and the community is looking for clarification in what would be, you know, an appropriate way to handle some of the, you know, some of the discrepancies that are not tied to particularly, you know, or they're not clear with the Brown Act or, you know, or state code.
Yeah, I really appreciate, I really appreciate our, our city manager explain well for this item. I believe that if a speaker could be able to speak in English and Vietnamese and other languages, I think that the council should allow the speaker to speak multi languages. But as long as the speaker speak within five minutes. And if the speaker could not speak in English, speak in other languages, and, and then the translator go to translate it to English, I totally agree that the speaker will have additional time, equal time for the translation. So it may end up to, may end up to ten minutes. I don't have a problem with that. But if the speaker could be able to speak for multi languages, and that speaker, you know, I mean, could able to speak in five minutes, I think that would be appropriate. That's what I think.
I guess what I would say is that under the, the strict reading of the government code, the Brown Act, it's basically saying that if you're going to limit time, which we have, to five minutes, the council shall provide at least twice the allotted time to a member of the public who utilizes a translator. So that doesn't mean that speaking, they themselves translate. They have, if they're using a translator, for whatever reason, they should get, we, we shall provide at least twice the allotted time. So we kind of have, we have to deal with that language. For us to be in compliance, we have to give twice the allotted time to, to a person who uses a translator. But it goes on to say that the purpose is to ensure that non-English speakers receive the same opportunity to directly address the legislative body. So clearly, what they're saying there, the purpose is to, for people, it's not about English into another language. You could allow that if you wanted, but that's not required by this. What this requires is that if someone doesn't speak English or doesn't speak it well, or for whatever reason, needs a translator, Brown Act says we should provide at least twice the allotted time. So to me, to be fully legal and safe on this, we should provide twice the allotted time if somebody for a particular reason needs a translator. Now that gets to what you said about, sometimes we get people that clearly appear, or, or maybe their English is pretty good. We, what I think is not a good thing is for us to get into the business of trying to define when somebody really needs it or not. That's, that's going to be really hard, I think, honestly, because we don't, it could be that somebody speaks English really well, but they are a lot more comfortable speaking in their, their native tongue. And so that person, we shouldn't shut them down or not give them the time just because they want to communicate in their native tongue. So obviously, that's difficult, and there's going to be people that are going to maybe even abuse it. The difficulty, obviously, with the gentleman that spoke tonight was that he, he very clearly spoke very well. Again, we, it's so hard because you, and, and in fact, he was translating for the translator. So he was, his English must have been better than the translator's. But again, it's kind of hard to get in the position of judging that somebody needs a translator.
I agree with you. I mean, I disagree. What you said earlier is that, well, there, sometimes like for myself, if I'm just having a casual conversation, you know, it's different. It's just casual Vietnamese. But if I'm going to get into the subject matter, and if I'm going to speak very deeply about the subject matter, I may not be able to express myself well. You know, I mean, what do you consider well? I'm, I don't want to get into a situation where we have to determine if this is, this person speaks well or that person doesn't speak well. That to me was a total waste of time, what we did the other night. You know, we, we stopped him for forty-five minutes and we started talking about it. So I really don't think we want to get into the business of, or don't want to get into a situation where we have to make that decision. Because I, I think that's going to lead to abuse on our part and on the council part. If you want to shut someone up, then you're going to say that person, you know, speaks well, and so just doesn't deserve to have a translator. I think it has to be really, from, from what happened the other night, the other, at the other meeting, I would say we have to explicitly say that if they choose to speak their native tongue, okay, they should be able to choose that. Okay, then all we have to do is, we have a translator, then we translate, we offer him that service. But I, you know, that should be really explicit. So I, I think we have to state that clearly. Because if not, we're going to get into another situation like that again. And so I, I disagree when you say, oh, the gentleman, I'm, I, I don't even know. But if you were talking about the person who spoke earlier, I could tell as I was listening to what he was saying in Vietnamese, I was like thinking to myself, do I know how to translate, you know, those words in, in English? I think those were very difficult statements for me, vice versa. You know what I'm saying? If I were translating. So I was listening, and there's some, some really very, very difficult statements he made. And I think he was comfortable making those complicated statements in Vietnamese. There was just absolutely, those are not just simple statements like, hi, how are you? And, you know, I'm here today, and, you know, at the very beginning when he spoke. So it's, it's, you should not be the judge of how someone, whether or not someone speaks well, you know, English well or not well. We should not be, we're not, we should not, unless you're going to put that explicitly in our policy, but that's really going to complicate the policy. And I don't think we have the right to do that. So we're going to offer, we offer to everybody. And if they choose, they should be able to choose. You let everybody else choose. So you should let everybody choose and not just limit it to whoever you want. And then that's what has been going on.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, like I mentioned earlier, or last time when this came up, it's not about if a person can speak that, in this case, English well, it's just, it's about what the individual feels comfortable with. You know, like I said before, I, people say I speak fluent Spanish, but that's not my comfortable language. Don't ask me to translate because I, I couldn't do it. You know, I have a hard time, you know, but I think we need to get really spelled out that if an individual needs a translator, he would get the double, the double time. But that person can't self-translate and get double time. It's only five minutes for an individual. And we just count the five minutes, whether, if an individual wants to speak in English and then for two and a half minutes, and then I understand, I, I think, because Westminster, we're in a unique situation here that I understand that a member wants to do a community service to, there's a lot of times in, in, as we all know, there's a lot of the stuff that happens in this council gets played out in, in the Vietnamese media. And the individual might want to be doing a, a community service by having what they're saying be understood by a Vietnamese community. So I understand that that's a, a unique situation we're in. So I think that we need to allow the same five minutes if a person wants to use that five minutes in whatever way they want to use it, whether it be all, all one language or, or do it in, in multiple language, but still get the five minutes, just like everybody else. I mean, that's, I think that would be the right thing to do for our unique situation here in our city. It's to, everybody gets five minutes, whether they use a translator or not.
I thought he gets double time. That's by law.
He's still counting the five minutes. When they're using a translator, we're, we're counting their, we're stopping their, their clock, right? We're only counting their five minutes.
Well, that's, that's the current practice, is to only count the time of the speaker.
I think that's the best way.
And, and technically, I, I think that tries to meet the intent to give equal time, but it doesn't meet the actual language of the, of the government code. It says give double time.
You know what, the, the, I mean, you know, it's shameful that we have to bring this up again, because the policy is very, to me, is very clear. But it was incon, if it conveniently forgot at the last meeting. You know, especially as the mayor, you know, the mayor treat us supposed to know all these policies by heart and implement it when needed, but apparently it was, was not the case. It was not, this was not about five or ten minutes. It was not. We all know that if the speaker speak Vietnamese, he has another five minutes for the translator to translate. And Madam City Clerk has been doing a very good job keeping track of that, so that no one going to slide past the five minutes mark. Uh, but it seems like, and, and it, it take longer. But the issue that we have to bring, talk about today is not about five or ten minutes about translating, but about, it was about stopping member of the public from making a a public comment to address the city council. And that was the issue. The mayor criticized and told the speaker not to uh, speak English, because your English is good. And then we have, uh, council member Charlie Nguyen was like, uh, you can't, you have to speak on your behalf. You cannot representing uh, other people when you address the city council. And I was like, are you censoring the public? And he was like, no. Uh, uh, tha- that was the intention. That's what, that's caused me to to be so embarrassed for this council, that we have to address the issue, to make a decision whether we're gonna allow a member of the public to, to have five minutes to, uh, address the city council. This had to stop. I, uh, you know, I proposed the, uh, the translator program, translation program in twenty nineteen. Uh, knowing that, it's just like a double S source. We want the member, the community to come here and speak to the council. That mean they have an opportunity to address everybody, including me. And I, I, I'm sure you, uh, we all witnessed that, and I got my share of criticism. And, uh, which is okay. You know, it's, it's a part of freedom of speech. But we gotta make sure that, uh, the, the, you know, the referee, in this case, the mayor Tretai, you have to apply the law equally to everybody, not just a selective field. And that's why we have this conversation today, this dialogue today, to address the same thing we already know, but um, the last meeting, we conveniently forgot. And, and, and that's very shameful. We need to respect and understand the purpose of, of public comments and allow the public to address. Um, and we need to stop the, uh, practice of respond to the, um, public comments. And as the, um, as the mayor, you, you chair the meeting, you have to stop personal attack. You have to protect all the city council and its, and, and this body. Uh, not just, not just, uh, your political allies. And that was, uh, to me, that was a lack of leadership. Um, you need to, you know, other city council, you know, there's a lot of disagreement, but they do not, but they do protect one another. So that they can work together and, and, and move the city forward. I look at the policy, I look at the staff report, and there's no, there's no difference from what we were talking about last week. There's none. So i- i- it's right now, we need to make a decision. I, I think if, if the, the mayor failed to uh, equally apply the policy to everyone, I think it's, we have to task that responsibility to someone else. I mean, maybe the city attorney can take over and have a friendly remind uh, the mayor that, uh, that's just not allowed. I- i- is that, uh, is that okay with the council? Because, uh, you know, we can, it, it seems like, um, our city attorney kind of shy from, uh, interject and say that, uh, mayor is, uh, is not allowed.
Well, whose, whose responsibility is it?
Can I respond?
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
I totally disagree with, uh, council member Do. I mean, like, uh, you are the one who like uh, completely jumped in many, many times when a member from the public uh, came up and mentioned your name, and it happened many, many times. So you did not, you do not have a thick skin to listen from, uh, the member from the community. And I think that Do tried to, uh, accusing me. I think that, you know, for the last meeting, I asked our city attorney to explain, you know, what happening. I welcome all the people from the public to come up to speak. But I mean, like, I just want to make sure that if the person to speak well in English, or, you know, if he decides to speak in English, and then he suddenly, uh, switch into Vietnamese. So I mean, how can we deal with that kind of circumstance? And many, many times, you signal the city attorney to stop the member, uh, from the public when they mention your name. That's completely shameful. I mean, you need to listen to all the comment from the community. So, but right now, we are, uh, this kids, uh, we, uh, we here to discuss whether or not we agree that member from the public, they could able to speak in English, and then they switch into Vietnamese, and then we provide a translator, or, you know, we, or, you know, uh, or that person, uh, is need to choose speaking Vietnamese at beginning. So we go to translate equal time. That's either item that we have to discuss at this moment. I allow anyone to speak.
May I speak?
Yes, please.
I was trying to say something before that. Um, can I go since I was, I'm gonna say something first? What I was gonna ask, but then I just heard the mayor speak. If, is that what I noticed? Is if the speaker is saying something in Vietnamese and, and there's the, we're not allowed to, the members of the public are not allowed to bash out personal attacks on, on a council member or anybody on this council. If, if the person who is not in, stopping that individual from personal attacks, then who's who's next in charge responsibility to stop that person? Our current, our city attorney doesn't speak Vietnamese himself. So I don't know, he wouldn't know what the individual's saying. So I understand that why in this case, in that situation, why council member Do would be the one to interject, because he speaks Vietnamese. Um, so
Absolutely.
So we need somebody to be that, that referee. And there's only, I can't help in that situation. And the, the city attorney is, he could, he can't help on that situation either. I guess that would maybe leave, leave it up to our interim city manager, if she understands Vietnamese to be the one to interject. If, if, if mayor, if you're, if you're not interjecting, as council member Do is saying. Um, so we need that. We need to have that person, you know, we're, we're counting on you to do it. I'm counting on you, because I don't know, I don't know what they're saying. So, but if you're not gonna do it, then who, who else is going to? Um, but, but I just wanna just get back on the subject of what we need to, that's a totally different subject, but we need to get back on the subject of what we need to do, so.
That, that exactly, that's exactly my intention. It was not try to attack. Uh, I'm just to point out the obvious, because it was conveniently, uh, let it go, because it's a personal attack, and it's just his responsibility to stop it. And, and I will wait it and wait it, and guess what? I have to voice my objection. And, and exactly what, uh, um, Vice Mayor Carlos Manzo mentioned, you know, four member of the city council speak Vietnamese fluently. And when a member of the public addresses the city council in Vietnamese and attack, personal attack on the city council, and it's, it's a mayor, you understand it completely, and you let it slide. And then you, you, and you choose, uh, another personal attack. I was like, hey, you don't have a thick skin to handle it. Excuse me. I'm twenty-five years on the street, and I have heard everything. Okay, so there's nothing in, in this, in this, uh, the public can tell me, and I cannot handle.
Um, so just get back to that subject. City Attorney, can you, I mean, what's gonna keep us legally safe, and that's what we need to do. So we're asking this, your guidance here.
Well, could I just, because I already heard you. So here, could I, could I just speak? Okay, I know you already said that what's gonna keep us safe, okay, with the Brown Act, is if we give double time. So I would like to give, I'd like to propose to approve six point two, but you make sure we explicitly state that we, number one is, uh, well, I'll talk about, you know, so I just said double time. So we gotta, don't wanna stop and start, because that's gonna just drive the clerk crazy. Um, and I think we just step, set the clock at double time. And that is to, so that we're not in violation. Okay, so that's what I would propose. Number two is to allow the speaker to choose the language that he or she wants to speak. And, and for God's sake, I really think if you, I don't remember, you know, from one speaker to the next, what language he or she spoke the previous time he spoke. So why would you, you know what I'm saying? Like, okay, it could be a very simple subject matter, maybe today, he chooses to speak English. But then another day, if it's a more complicated subject, and he decides that he, the same person who spoke the other day in English, today he wants to speak in Vietnamese, he should, should be allowed. So not only should he be allowed to speak the language he chooses, it should be applied every single time. So you can't say, I'm gonna put that one on file to, you, you choose English, so I'm gonna just put that in what? Do you have a contact for him that you're gonna put what language he prefers? No, we always rely on a person coming to the podium and say, I would like an interpreter. Or, or they don't need to say anything. You would assume that they're gonna, you know, speak in English, right? So I believe that should happen every time. That should be the protocol, every single time. That person should be able to come to the podium and say, I would like, and, you know, um, a translation. And so don't just, so I think it's really absurd that even you, uh, city, um, attorney, when you say, yeah, I heard him speak English, and I thought, I thought he was pretty fluent. Now you being the judge of his language skills, that's ridiculous. So like I said, at the very beginning, anybody could say, hello, how are you? And say whatever, you know, just casual conversation. And then before he gets into his subject matter, and I've heard some very complicated stuff being said in Vietnamese that I myself didn't, we kind of relied on the English translation. Okay, so I would say, not only does he choose, he, he could choose every single time, a different language. So today, he comes up to the podium, he chooses Vietnamese. Okay, the next meeting, he could come up to the podium and chooses English. And he should be able to do that. So let's add that, because our council is being, is, like, certain people are nitpicking. And I think not to, not to nitpick, but I think the purpose, you know what the intended purpose is? To, and if it's not intended up to this point, then I would say, so that we don't end up one day have someone with the intention of, of, of shutting that person up. Okay, we should write that in the policy, because we're making a policy today that's gonna apply to every case. So if, if we don't, if something is not applicable to every case, then we need to add it. So let's not target any, anyone at this time. Let's just try to make sure that we cover every case. Like I said, that the same person, I don't care if it's the same person who spoke last week in English, and today he wants to speak Vietnamese or Spanish. And if we have a Spanish, or just want to translate, a translator available, then that's what he should be able to choose to speak. Does that make sense?
We need to have language in there. Trans, self-translating? Oh, yes.
Council member Nguyen? Yes.
Yes, I, I'd like to voice my opinion. I haven't yet the chance to speak, you know, on this item from the beginning until now, so my, the first thing, I will voice my opinion based on what the comments that the council just made. Secondly, I will, uh, give my input into the item that we have in front of us today. First of all, if you go back, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I'm pretty sure that, you know, to be fair to the mayor, he said that he thought it's over fifteen minutes. Uh, you know, uh, when, uh, the gentleman, uh, spoke last time. And it's, it not only the mayor thought that way, it's also me, I thought it's over ten minutes. And also, if I'm not mistaken, Vice Mayor, Mayor Manzo thought the same thing. So that was the time that the mayor voiced his opinion that if you do, you can do it ten minutes, not over ten minutes, to be fair. Now, I am not sure if we can go back and take a look at the, you know, uh, the, to tape again, I mean, the, uh, the recorder, recording. But then, you know, at, until this point, your staff may forgot to put, you know, I, uh, you know, the time, uh, uh, for that speaker. And so we go over, which is okay. If, as long as he took five, ten minutes of his time, it's fine. But it's go over fifteen minutes, then that's not allowable. Okay, and I know that the mayor said it over and over and over again. And also, if I am not mistaken, again, council ma, I mean, uh, Vice Mayor Manzo did say that too. And I did say that too. So let me fair to the mayor for his voicing his opinion, because he is the one who conducted the meeting, and he has the right to assume that it's over fifteen minutes, and he kept right to mention that to the, to the public. Now, as for the item today, in front of us, I don't care whether there is, you know, if, if the person is going to speak in their native, uh, you know, modern language, and, and then translate into English. But we also have an incident today that English, a person speak in English, you can say that, you know, you judge, uh, that person, yeah, whether they can speak English or not. Clearly, we know that she can speak English, but translate into Vietnamese. Are we going to allow that? If we do, then we, we need to decide to put it on the, 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 the policy. If not, then we have to stop it right now. Again, from the city, uh, manager, and also from the, the city attorney, that we are not required to translate from English to Vietnamese or to whatever language. We only responsible to provide translation for non-English speaker. So, you know, I, I, I just want to be fair to everyone. We need to, to, we need to do that. And at the same time, uh, to answer, uh, Vice Mayor Manzo, he is conducting the meeting, I mean, the mayor is, is the one who conducted the meeting. He has the right to stop when there is, you know, he has to make, uh, you know, he has to stop when there is, uh, uh, you know, um, what is it? A personal attack on a council. And he did that numerous of time. We can't say that he didn't do it. He did. For, for, you know, I, I admit that there are times that he didn't do. I don't know, you know, maybe he's, he's over oversee the, the problem, or, or whatever that it resonates. But don't tell him that he can't, he'd never done that before. I, I think that that's, you know, we're trying to, uh, attack, or we're trying to, you know, um, you know, trying, trying to, uh, get, um, not, we are not being fair to the mayor. That, that, that's what I'm trying to say.
Mayor, if I may, if there are no more councils.
I just wanted to make sure that we do get in there that I agree with. Um, the reason I, I was okay with earlier when thorough, thorough communications about having the English-speaking resident have it translated into Vietnamese, is because we've done that in the past. And we hadn't got to this part of the agenda. So after this part of the agenda, we need to set it and stick to it, and make sure that we follow this policy. And I, and I, I agree with the the two items that Councilmember Ho presented, but I also wanna make sure that it, on the policy, it states that you can't cannot do self-translating. You can't speak in English and then translate yourself into Vietnamese. You can't, if a person feels comfortable in their native language, they need to just speak that language only, and we have a translator.
You know, I, I, I think there might be an issue with that, because, uh, we cannot tell the person what to do in turn, but they have that five minutes, so they wanna speak uh, in English and then translate into Vietnamese. That's, that's a five-minute thing. That's all they got, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't.
So, you know, when you regulate that, it's gonna be a, uh,
That's what we talked about before.
But let me say one thing, first of all. That is what, why be advisable to be, take each of these issues one at a time, so that way we can take a vote. So that way, we can take a vote on how you're gonna deal with the translation, uh, the motion essentially that Councilmember Ho made, which is the one I would recommend because I do think that's the easiest, most workable solution. Do this one at a time. On the, and, and one of those subjects is can a person self-translate? From a legal perspective, they're entitled to five minutes and they're entitled to use that five minutes however they want. So if that person wants to speak two and a half minutes in English and two and a half in Vietnamese or in Spanish, we, we should let them do so. As long as it's within the five minutes. The, the duty to translate does not arise until they need a translator. So I agree with what Councilmember Ho said. The trigger should be, I need a translator. The moment they say, I need a translator, at that juncture, that triggers the duty to, to double the time legally. So short of that, people should operate at five minutes. And they can speak Vietnamese, they can speak English. But if they ask for the translator, then that, that's the doubling of the time. But I, I, again, going back, you should go one by one on these items because otherwise we could be talking about a lot of different things.
Mayor, if I, if I may, in an attempt to reel this conversation a little bit more. So currently, currently, our standard practice is that we, we ask for notification forty-eight hours in advance for any kind of arrangement, which includes the inter, you know, the interpreter. We automatically do the interpreter. So at this juncture, you know, we have, you know, we, we have your approval of having an interpreter here every time. But other cities that, you know, that, that, you know, ask if, if someone needs interpreting, they give advanced notice. So some of the examples that I provided, it's an advanced notice thing, it's not automatic. And that's just, you know, moving forward that at some point we may not have an interpreter available. Um, and so that's just something to consider. But, um, you know, it's clear in government code about double the time. So if it's a matter of practice, we can certainly just set the clock automatically at double time, which would be at ten minutes. And we can certainly do that. That is, you know, that, that will, and that's with the use of a translator. So no one's, no one's really, no one is asking to assess anyone's ability to speak any particular language. If anyone identifies themselves as requiring the use of a translator, as it states in the code, we will provide that double time. And so we can spell that out. It does exist in the law, but we will spell that out. The second issue that we have related to that, that translation is again, the self-translation. In the past, prior to COVID, when someone has come up, they've used double time. Uh, or not, I'm sorry, not double time, but they've, they've self-translated and we did not give them the double time. They just chose to speak two languages within the five minutes. And that was also not a problem. So we can go down the list of things that we need to, to hit and let's just, let's just do that. We currently have an oral communications ordinance that sets the five minutes. I would say if this is something that council feels strongly about for consistency purposes, we can come back with an amendment to that ordinance, which will incorporate all of these things that, you know, that, that the council wants to address. And therefore, it's, it's policy. You know, so, so we set the clock at double time, ten minutes. Allowing the speaker to choose the language. If they use an interpreter, if they use an interpreter, whether it's provided by, you know, if they bring a neighbor to interpret, that's fine too. That's normally what happens in other cities is, you know, they don't rely on, on a staff member or, or, you know, a, a, an interpreter provided by the city. They bring somebody. So whether they use an interpreter, city or not, then they will get the double the time. If someone is looking to self-interpre, again, the purpose is for addressing the city council. If they self-interpre, they just get the normal amount of time, which would be the five minutes. And so, I mean, those are, those were mainly the key points. You know, the, the issue about, um, you know, the personal attacks and that's just part of, that's really just part of decorum.
Decorum. Yes, decorum.
No, I think, yes.
That, that, that is, that is just, that is part of decorum that just does not get addressed with this oral communication policy. So I just wanted to note that.
May I, may I just speak to the seventy-two hours? Did you say forty-eight hours notice?
Yeah, so we, we've always given forty-eight hours for...
Let's leave that part. I propose that we leave that part because, uh, if we have the interpreter here available, then we would, you know, that would be at our, um, I guess that would be at our choosing or it depends on our budget. But we should always, um, ask for the forty-eight hours. And so if, on a day where the person comes and we don't have, uh, we don't have a, an interpreter because of budget or because of whatever interpreter is sick, we're not obligated, if we don't have anyone, then, then, then we, we have the right...
We'll avoid, we'll avoid mandatory language. Yeah. So the way the government code says, if they utilize a translator. So if we have one, they're utilizing it.
If we have one.
If they bring one, they're utilizing it. We don't have one, then...
All right. So, uh, let me try to explain that I totally okay, totally welcome if the person speak, uh, either in Vietnamese or other languages, not in English, and we provide equal time or even more to translate that into English. I don't have a problem. I think that that's a good practice. But my concerns here and all the members of the city council more than welcome to, uh, explain to me what, what you really think. Okay, if the person speak in English like couple minute and suddenly that person decide to speak in Vietnamese, so are we allow like the equal time to translate?
What do you mean by that?
From, uh, Vietnamese into English. So, okay, if the person come up here, speak like couple minute in English, suddenly he decide to speak in Vietnamese. So his time limitation will be go over than five minutes.
If I remember correctly...
Would it be an example like earlier? Like the, the guy who spoke early where he came up and he spoke in English and then he started in...
In English and then later he decide to speak in Vietnamese and so we have to provide that translator. I mean, if the council okay with that, I don't have a problem. But, you know, if we set that as our policy, so a lot of people will come up here, they speak a couple minute in English and then they switch to other languages. And then the city have to provide translator. So that is my question.
I think the, the city clerk's already addressed the issue, the last council meeting that she keep tap on, um, have a timer running. But as soon as that person stop and speak in other languages, she will put a stop on that stopwatch and then allow the translator to take over. And until the five minutes run out, we already addressed, established that foundation, the last meeting. I don't know if you remember that, but when, um, when Vice Mayor Calum Manzo thought that, you had the impression that the conversation was more than five minutes and...
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sitting close already clarify that you are on top of everything and, and, uh, keep the, the timer running and you stop it when, um, that the individuals that speaking, uh, or waiting for the translator to translate. Is that correct, ma'am?
That's correct. Uh, Councilmember Doe, currently the practice is that as the person is speaking in whatever language, we allow the clock to run. If they're using, um, our interpreter, at that point, when the interpreter begins to speak, we stop the clock and then we go back and forth. That's that green light that you see, um, when they're here in person.
But that is the current, that's the current situation. But I think what is being proposed is that we do away with that situation. We're gonna give double time. And so I, I totally understand the mayor's concern. And I think legitimately, I think, well, he has a legitimate point in that somebody like earlier, we'll just use that example, where the person came up and said some things that were very, very simple, you know, sim, sim, simple English. And then he, then he, then he went on and asked for an interpreter and then he started his speech. So I think, um, I think we gotta set the rules and made it clear. Like, is it gonna be English and it would be, or, or is it gonna be Vietnamese? Vietnamese all the way and then have the interpreter interpret.
I, I, I don't think we should regulate that and just allow the city clerk doing her job. She know what's to do. Is, the, the, the issue is not about timing. It's the issue that we brought up, uh, to discuss today is, uh, we interrupt and stop a member of the public from speaking Vietnamese. And then we, we have a member of the city council try to censure, try to tell the member of the public to not to say something or not representing something. I think, I think we start dripping away from why we're talking about this, uh, issue. The policy is solid and I don't see anything wrong with it. I mean, we already established this. So, you know, with your modification to the, uh, to the, um, uh, city ordinance, I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
I think...
Just, just, it's, 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 we, we talk about it's too long and it's getting, getting, uh, we're gonna often attention.
No, well, so...
Finish it.
Councilmember Wayne?
Yes. Let's say that I'm a public member and I, I can speak both Vietnamese and English. So I can come up and automatically I have ten minutes, right? If I, if I, you know, switch back and forth between Vietnamese and English. Is that correct?
No.
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 Well, see, that, that, so we have to decide whether they, if they want to speak Vietnamese and they have to speak Vietnamese all the way, they can't switch between the, themselves. So, you know, that's...
The trigger, the trigger would be asking...
Now, if the, the, the question, let me finish, please. The, the mayor mentioned earlier that they, let's say a person came up and say, uh, in English for a couple minutes and then go to, you know, uh, talk in Vietnamese, speaking Vietnamese. So do I have a total of five minutes there for myself? Or do I have ten minutes?
If you trans, self-translate, then you have five.
Five minutes, yeah.
Then we have to make sure that that is the case.
Well, the, the, the city clerk's been doing a pretty good job with that. So, I mean, w- we have the city staff right on top of that. That's not an issue we need to discuss here. I think we, we weren't talking about this for too long and it, it go into a revolving door here, so.
There anything else that we have to clarify?
I just want, I wanted to talk about, um, that point that somebody brought up about considering our budget issues, that should we consider having that, would you say forty-eight hour notice or at least twenty-four hour notice?
We're not gonna change that, that's what it says and...
But what I'm saying is that there's been meetings where we've had the interpreter here and we're paying him to be here and there's been times where he wasn't used, but we still have to pay him.
We don't have to.
Well, what I'm saying, I, I think we need to consider, um...
That's a different issue though. Budget issue.
No, what I need, what I'm saying is that policies that if somebody's gonna need a translator, they should be able to have, give us a notice so we can make sure that the translator is here. Why are we gonna have the translator here if he's not gonna be used?
So to add, so I, I get what you're saying. So to add to that, previously, we would have staff translate and there was just a lot of disagreement as to what was being translated or how it was being translated. And so that's why, at a point, we ended up with a professional interpreter. Um, and it was because, you know, we, we took staff out of the, you know, out of that. We have, you know, we have bilingual staff, but they weren't translating in a way that was, I guess, agreeable or, you know, to standards, I guess. But I understand. So in, in other cities, it's generally an advanced notice. Um, we've just gone above and beyond. It's not a legal requirement, but we've gone above and beyond to provide this person. There is a cost. I don't remember what the cost is off the top of my head, but there's, there is a minimum, there is a minimum, so. But we do it every time.
Yeah, I thought you said there was, I thought it's a three-hour minimum.
It's a three-hour minimum, probably around the four, five hundred, five hundred dollar range, four, five hundred per meeting. Sometimes longer because, you know, when we have public hearings, we let them sit, you know, through that as well. Um, anytime there's, you know, or anytime there's, there's a public hearing, then they're obviously here longer. So, but this has just been practice that we've implemented since 2019.
Do we, I think we need to consider that going forward if, to implement that, uh, the advanced notice so we can, if there's, we have a notice that is gonna be needed for the, for that meeting, then we would know to...
So we can build in, so for the purposes of, of this item for tonight, you know, we, we, we're definitely not talking about the interpreter. Um, that's for another day. But we can certainly build in a forty-eight hour notice anyway so that we can gauge, you know, from, from the residents if they're going to need an interpreter or not. And so that there's no harm in, in putting that in the ordinance at this point. And then, of course, when we have a special meeting, we usually bring that down to like six, you know, six hours notification, somewhere around there. So we'll adjust it accordingly. But, you know, the, um, you know, the, the discussion that happened at last meeting went off in a couple of different tangents and, but the essence of it is, you know, it really is about the time and, and developing a, a fair process um, so that the speakers are all, you know, and, and, and us as well, um, council and staff, that we're all on the same page about the process. So there have been instances in the past, and, and this is where I can understand, you know, being here, um, watching the meetings for a while. We've had people come up, speak in English and then decide that they were going to self-translate and then demand that double time. That instance has happened in the past before and because, you know, we weren't not, we were not consistent and we were not, um, you know, we just allowed them to have the double time. And, you know, that being said, there's always gonna be that, that, um, you know, that when they're self, when they are self-translating, it's true. Some of us will not know what they're saying and are they really translating or saying the same thing? You know, the, that's, that's where I've seen other cities stop that because it's not addressing the council. It's just, it's different here because, you know, because of the, you know, because of the language and, 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 and the number of, you know, of us that do understand it. So, um, but these are all things that need to be considered as we're, you know, talking about this ordinance. So, um, you know, we've, we've resolved the clock and the time issue. You know, it, it's either gonna be, it's really gonna be either you set it at double time or you have the clerk start and stop it. Those are really your only two options.
Can we take a vote on that one issue?
Okay.
And deal with?
That one.
When, what is the policy when someone needs translation? I, the recommendation was to give them double time and, and the trigger is that they've asked for translation and that it only applies to a non-English language to English. That would be, I think, what the motion is.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask the city clerk, uh, would it be easier if you keep the stopwatch and stop us as the economy being translated? Or, or too confusing to have it run, the clock running double time?
Um, we will accommodate whatever the council's direction is. Um, it's not a, an issue for us one way or the other. We'll comply with whatever the council's direction.
You know, I, I would suggest that's allow the city clerk doing her job because that's what she's been doing. So create any new movement...
The problem with that is it, it doesn't meet the government code that says you must give double time. That's the problem.
Okay, then I don't even know why we're voting. We gotta comply with that. If that's the government code, that's a law, let's just...
We, I just wanna get direction from the council and we'll come back with the policy.
So I would vote yes. Go double time.
So can we add that language that, that request needs to be made at the very beginning, as soon as they walk up? Not like the mayor was saying that they say a few words and then after they spoke for a minute or seconds and then they say, oh, I need a translator then, and then they would go over the, the, the ten minutes.
Can the, can the city clerk accommodate that?
No, what I'm saying is...
Reset the clock and then let's say that they go a minute into it and then can you reset the clock and then go with nine minutes left?
Well, I would have to do that.
Does, does that make sense?
That was kind of unworkable or, you know, applying it fairly to everybody.
Yeah.
I think, I think if, if the person need their translator, you know, where at beginning when they come to, you know, uh, to speak, they can ask for the interpreter or, or the translator. If not, then, you know, in all of this, in the middle, then, you know, they, they should know if we have the set policy, then they know about it. Then they will ask what, why, why complicate things? You know, if we have the policy, then everybody follow the policy that we set out to do. And it make it easy for, for all of us. You know, if you need a, a translator, when you come up to the podium, then ask for translator, you know?
I really think, yeah, yeah. I, I totally agree that if city council, we go with, uh, direction that we give the person who don't speak English... direction that we give the person who don't speak English and want to do, want to have like a translator. So we give him or her double time, up to, up to 10 minutes. Yes. I'm okay with that. I'm totally agree with that.
But that's, okay, so that's essentially affirming, so we're just essentially reaffirming.
Yes.
The government code section then. Okay, and that's perfectly fine. We, we can indicate that we're reaffirming the guy, okay?
I know, but I just don't wanna get into a situation where we stop the person and say, like.
Right.
Like the mayor said, if a person is in, starts in speaking in Nigish and then says, oh, you, oh, you know what? By the way, I want a translator. And then he were, him, him or the public already spoke for a little bit. Then now the city clerks gotta make, make sure that, that you keep your clock. You, you, you know, you, you adjust to what's already been taken up. But then, then we're gonna rely all just on the city clerk.
Yes.
Thank you so much for understanding and so that's, that's what I've been asking.
So we can build that into our speaker card process when they're coming up to.
That's what we need to do.
Yeah, we, I mean, we could just have a box that says, do you need an interpreter? And then translate that in a few languages and so we already know in advances they're walking up that they need an interpreter.
There you go.
So we can just, we can do that and that does not require an ordinance change or anything. So, so we're gonna reaffirm.
Second, second question would be, what's the policy if a person wants translation from English to Vietnamese or to Spanish?
I, I think that, that go against the Brown's Act because the, the purpose of, uh, public communication was that basically address the city council. So if they speak English, then there's no need for translation.
Legally, it's not required, so.
That, that was my concern earlier when we allow the translation from English to Vietnamese, we set precedent unless we specifically address, uh, en- enumerate that into our policy to say, we shall not allow English, uh, come and be translated to Vietnamese.
So that would just be reaffirming the Brown Act then, that, with the purpose of the Brown Act to address the city council and then we can add additional language.
It's not, it's not addressed by the Brown Act. This is a, a freedom choice thing. You, you're not required to do it. But if you want to provide translation.
No.
No.
To do it.
No.
Okay, so we're, okay, perfect. I think we have direction on that one. Um. So when somebody wants to self translate, what I would say.
Need a motion for?
I think we just, we just need general direction. It looks like we have consensus on it. We'll come back with a policy and the council will then vote on it.
Okay.
I, I, I think we're just trying to get an understanding.
Self, self translate, they will get five minutes.
Five minutes.
So five minutes, you can use it however you want. Okay.
Sorry, was, wasn't that the same thing that we were just talking about before though with the self translation? And then council member, do your concern about allowing them to translate back from?
No, no, no. In one situation.
Us to do the reverse translation.
English speaker requesting, uh, their come and be translated to into Vietnamese.
Okay, yeah, no, that we wouldn't allow. Okay.
And so this is a common sense one. If someone doesn't, they, maybe they don't speak English, um, that well, but they get up and they just speak as best as they can, but they don't ask for a translator. Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Right? I, I just wanna be clear on that. I wanna mention the issue of, of personal attacks. I just wanna be clear on this issue. Attacks are actually allowed, okay, and in fact are required to allow it. So we gotta be clear on that. What's not allowed is for people to come up and speak on matters that are not within the jurisdiction of the city council. So when somebody gets up there and starts talking about the personal life of somebody and it's not relevant to something that the council has jurisdiction over, that's, that should be cut off as saying, you know, you know, you're talking about the school board. We're not the school board, you know? Or they, or they're saying something personal about the person, uh, they did last week at their house. These kinds of things are not within your jurisdiction and can be cut off. So again, I do agree with what was said before. Oftentimes if it's said in Vietnamese, I, I don't know. Um, so I am dependent on the council to jump in on that. But I, I do try to listen for those things where they're talking totally off base. But we do have to err on the side of allowing the public some just, you know, uh, room there. If it's in doubt, we should let them speak. If it, if it kind of pertains to city business. So, um, I, I just say that.
And what about attacking, uh, other member in the community that not relevant to the city council? Would we allow them a platform to do that?
Yeah, I, I think that's getting, that, that has nothing to do with, we are meeting here at a city council meeting to conduct city business. So if we start getting into personal attacks from a speaker against somebody else, that's not relevant to the council and should be, uh, should be stopped because it's, it's really getting the city, the council away from what it's supposed to be doing, which is focusing on city business.
All right.
Vote on that?
Oh, I think that's, I want to bring back.
I think we have direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll bring back.
An improved version of this.
So we don't need to take any action for this item because our staff will, uh, bring back, uh, policy. Okay, for this matter, all right?
And then will you, do you need to, um, explicitly state that, um, the person who comes to the podium could decide like for that day? As I stated earlier, yeah, previous days, he might have spoken English on his own, right? Without a translator. But then today he decides he wants to speak Vietnamese. He should be able to decide that. And so every day is a different.
Yes.
Yes.
Decision and.
Yes, I totally agree that. I don't have a problem. Yes, I don't have a problem.
Do we need to say that? Do we need to state that? So the person who comes to the podium.
Yes.
Comes that day, gets to decide what he wants to speak.
Yeah, we're, we're not even gonna dress. If, it's, it's gonna be on that person if that person wants to do that.
To the person?
Where, yeah, we're not.
Yeah, because you know, we, we, we spent 45 minutes to, you know, arguing over, yeah, he used to speak that. I remember him. I just wanna say that. Hey, hey, is my turn to speak, please?
You know, we're talking about.
That's why I just wanna say that because we, we, we spoke, you know, and then earlier today too, when we were deliberating.
Just move on.
So, so I just wanna make sure that we don't wanna state anything or, you know, do we need to write anything on the policy regarding that?
No, I think staff, they, uh, not that now and they, uh, will, uh, bring back for the next meeting.
All right.
But we'll make it clear. Councilmember Nguyen?
Councilmember Nguyen, everything to say?
No, I, I'm done.
Okay, good. So we don't need to take any action for this item because staff will bring that back. Are we good with that, right?
Yeah.
So next, we have a comment from city council, agency member, including AB 1234 report when required. Anyone wanna say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, that, you know, again, uh, apologies for not, uh, being able to attend the meeting in person. Uh, but I appreciate for, you know, uh, letting me join the meeting and, and, you know, sharing my opinions and making decision, uh, for the city business. Uh, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, I'll go next. Thank you, mayor. I just wanna take a time to thank, uh, again, uh, I think I failed to thank, uh, probably works director Jake Know, um, for all his hard work and his help with the, with the Tony Lamb Park dedication. So thank you, Ja- Jake, for all your hard work. Um, also wanna thank, uh, um, I went on a ride along this past Tuesday with our PD. I wanna thank, uh, um, HLO officer, um, Perez and Commander McCormick, our police chief, Lengi, and all the rest of our Westminster PD who, who was there and also Garden Grove PD and, uh, CHP. It was really eye opener with, uh, what we, we went out there and saw and it's a pretty sad situation that, what we have going on out there with the homeless situation. I just wanna thank all our Westminster PD for, you know, all you do and trying to help in that area. Also wanna just thank staff again for all your hard work, um, helping us out and and kind of working through, through really difficult times with, um, you know, with the expired MOU and waiting for way too long, almost three years. Thank you for still, you know, your hopes up and your dedication to our city. I know it takes, it takes a lot. Thank you very much. Um, and just, uh, city manager and all your hard work as well. Thank you. That's all I got. And also, I, I, we seem to always forget him. He's sitting there kinda low. Our assistant city, city, uh, manager Adolfo, thank you for all your hard work to Adolfo. He gave you a bigger chair. Thank you.
Go next.
Please.
Um, regrettably, I missed that, um, ride along and actually missed some action there. I don't know why, but I got the, um, I guess I got the notice like the night before and I didn't know it was like gonna be that morning, like five, six hours later. So I, I'll catch you next time. So please let me know and thank you for, for, uh, for, for doing that because that, that'll be, uh, um, you know, very educational for us, I'm sure. Um, looking forward to the next time you have it. And, um, I just wanna comment, um, I thank all of our staff, uh, police officers, WMEA people for coming here today. Yeah, I'm kinda, you know, since I've been on the council, I, I, it's been six years and I, you know, I feel uh, really bad that, uh, our, our pay is, um, is, you know, to hear that we're 91%, is it 91 or 95? 91% uh, below everybody? And so I, I would like for us to slowly do better. Um, I think, you know, a, a goal should be, you know, slowly coming up to like 75% maybe. You know, we wanna be on top, at least like maybe the top uh, 50% to, you know, that's very reasonable because I think our, our staff really deserve that. And, uh, I think we should get the cream of the crops because our, our community, uh, deserve that. And I, I see our, um, I see the commitment in our, you know, our staff in general. I mean, not just the WMEA and the POA, or shall I say, um, all of our staff. I see that commit, commitment and I think that we should put that on our, um, like of like a goal setting and figure out how we're gonna do better because we cannot continue to recruit uh, good people or we, or retain good, uh, employees if we, if we keep, keep up not being so low or pay so low and not very, very competitive. So I, I, I think they really deserve that and I think, uh, whatever it is, you know, that's really not their problem. We just need to do a better job and we gotta come up with ideas and try to bring in revenue and including, you know, um, let's, let's give that, um, one set tax a lot of thought. And I, I, I want you to keep reminding everybody that, you know, the community need to work with us. Don't fight us on ideas for revenue and, uh, keep coming up with ideas and, and never say no, uh, until you vet thoroughly uh, through each one. So, um, I'd like to thank everybody, all our staff and for, um, I mean, this is not like, this is just a goodbye and we'll see you in two weeks. So, um, thank you for working so hard. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I guess my, my, my turn. Um, uh, first of all, I just wanna, you know, reflect, uh, the, uh, couple of events, uh, the number ones, the Black April that the city put up and, uh, I just wanna acknowledge the city staff for an outstanding job. It's, uh, you know, we took the ownership and, and put up that event and take the politik out of that and it was, uh, very nice. Um, which is a time for us to reflect, uh, the reason why, uh, we're here. Uh, this is a painful pass. Um, you know, we have to leave our homelands and, and settle here and, and this, uh, city. Um, just appreciate what the American people that welcome up with, uh, open arm and give us our opportunity. And, um, I just wanna, uh, acknowledge Vice Mayor, um, Colom Manzo, you know, aptly during the, uh, um, Black April, uh, weekend, uh, he took the time and went with me to Powell Museum and, uh, watching and listening to, uh, exhibits that, um, for, for, of both people that, uh, across Southeast Asia, Thailand, Malaysia, Hong Kong and, uh, uh, to me, it's a, um, Vice Mayor Colom Manzo, you know, took the time to understand the pain and suffering of the people that he represented in the city so that he can understand, you know, um, the Vietnamese American better. Um, you know, the old saying, uh, understanding is the foundation of love and that, that's, that's what it take. Uh, you take the time to understand people, you don't judge them. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, another event, Tony Lamb, uh, Park dedication, that's a, not a great event. Um, um, that the, the city staff, uh, is right, right there with everybody. Blending, you know, camera flat and blending, so it's a great job. And, and again, the, the, the politic was out of it, uh, it's a truly city event. Uh, it's not about any of us elected officials. It's about, uh, Mr. Tony Lamb. So, uh, great job. Thank you very much. Um, I, uh, just wanted to talk a little bit about the key, uh, country, uh, Brown Act violation that we have. Member of the public that, uh, had been talking our ear off for the past couple of meetings and, um, we need the city, uh, to respond to those allegations. It's, it's, it make us look really bad that we allow, uh, a city committee, uh, with all these, uh, Brown Acts violation and we don't have any respond or anything to, um, to, uh, um, prove to the public that's true, not true, none of the above, uh, we need to say something, okay? Can, can we take care of that the next meeting or? Can we do that?
I think part of the issue is investigating it to determine. Kinda need authorization to.
You, you don't have to respond to that. This is my comment. We need to respond to, uh, take care of that. And, uh, last but not least, uh, this one, I think is, uh, city employees, uh, that's including the, the police department. Uh, you know, it's, uh, um, the 10% increase on the whole lot, but it's something that we, uh, you know, you can help your family, um, take, you know, pay for the kids' college, uh, tuition and all that stuff. And, uh, don't give up hope yet. So hand in there, um, this council will do whatever we have to do to take care of a business. So hopefully, uh, change, change is happening. And, uh, I, I hope that, uh, it will go in the, uh, right direction so that we, we can, uh, afford to give the city employees a bigger raise so you can take care of your family. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Nguyen? Oh, he already spoke, okay? So I, uh, just want to echo what the vice mayor, uh, mentioned earlier that I want to thanks our police, uh, our police department for working with other, law enforcement agency, um, regarding the issue of homelessness. That is a really complicated issue and, um, I think that, um, it really takes some time. But I believe at the end of the day, as long as we all work together, our police, uh, work with other, uh, law enforcement agency, I think that we are good able to, uh, improve that, uh, matter. So we really want to thanks every police officer in our city for his or her dedication. Really appreciate that. So, uh, with that, I'd like to, uh, adjourn the meeting. The next, uh, meeting will be on. The next uh meeting will be on Wednesday, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty two at seven P M. Meeting adjourned.